School Board meeting to order for May 11. Secretary Van Giver, can you take attendance?
All board members are frozen with the exception of Mr. Trustee Kohler.
Do we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered and indivisible, with liberty and justice
We'll move to item 2A, public comments. Do we have any public comments today? Seeing no public comment, we'll move on to 3A, a cooperative agreement between Bloomfield Schools, the Charter Township of West Bloomfield, Parks and Recreation Commission, discussion. So we'll start. You, Pat?
Thank you, Dr. Salwar. So as everyone knows, for the past couple of years, we've worked with WB Parks on a cooperative agreement to leverage Pine Lake as an additional or enhanced asset to bring some additional amenities into it. So in the board update was the final draft put together, working with Dan Abrams and Clark Hill, working with Joe, working with Kelly and their team and their attorney. And so are there any questions about the proposed final cooperative agreement? Because this is something we'd like the board to vote on at the next board meeting on the 25th. So happy to answer any questions about the potential or proposed cooperative agreement.
I have a question.
Yes.
It says it's a 20-year period and it terminates in 2043. Is there an ability to re-continue the contract after that point? Or what is the difficult thing that people do in this circumstance?
Yeah, there would be. So the conversation we've worked through, you know, if it's 20 years down the road, he'll probably retire.
Yeah.
He'll probably moved on. But the ability to continue the partnership. It also provides cost avoidance for us. So we're going to save quite a bit of, or have quite a bit of cost avoidance by not having to maintain that property. And because WB Parks has some different things available to them, they're going to add additional amenities. They're going to do things that we wouldn't be able to do. So it's a great win for the community because it's an enhanced green space for them to use. So it's a win-win all the way around. And then we've also worked with WB Parks on expanding some other things. I know you've worked with Mark Wyatt on doing some more of the community add. So hopefully it's just the beginning of a partnership that benefits all the communities that we serve.
And we can comment on the 20-year where we, why we came up with that timeframe is that is the life expectancy of many amenities that we would be doing improvements such as the parking lot, playgrounds, pickleball courts, tennis courts. Well, pickleball, we talked about adding pickleball there. So trail maintenance, so that's why we did talk about what year term here's who would pick and that's the term we agreed on.
Dana, along those lines, does that then renew on a yearly, like for one-year reoccurring basis?
It doesn't. It really just talks about 20 years. It would have to be redone at that time.
So being that everybody at this table is probably not very likely to remember, even if they're here, to remember that 2043, 20 years ago, we entered into this agreement.
I personally don't love agreements that automatically renew. That's my personal preference because I don't think that, because if you don't realize it's expiring and you didn't, you know, terminate it, it's going to automatically renew. I'm not a fan of that myself or of my clients. But you have the ability as you're getting closer to start renegotiating, doing amendment to it. Yeah, someone's got to remember. I agree.
We could easily incorporate like an annual update into our operating procedures on a-
Great idea.
That's perfect.
On a board, like if it's June or at the beginning of your school year.
Yeah. I would imagine that we would definitely come to the school board on a yearly basis, kind of give you update where we're at, what projects we got going forward, what's going on, you know. And quite honestly, I think a lot of people at this table would probably agree that the hope is down the line, depending on demographics, and if the school district doesn't need the property, that it would continue. And I would almost think, you know, we're kind of looking at it, we're getting our foot in the door. We've looked at opportunities over the years for the east side of West Bloomfield because we don't have a park there. We've always looked for opportunities and this gives us an opportunity at the beginning. And hopefully this would continue beyond the 20-year period. I know that's the, that's kind of the thought process and the vision of the commission is that we would, you know, once we're in there, it's going to be a huge benefit to the community and that specifically the school district doesn't need it for another school. It continues as a park.
One question.
Sure.
For number 12, under the liability insurance, is that just usual, the usual amount? Or is there a reason why we went with the $5 million? Should we have?
So we, we didn't, I really don't get normally into the insurance, to the numbers themselves. I make sure you're protected and make sure there's indemnification and insurance. We had the district talk to the carrier, the carrier house.
Made sure our cooperative insurance liability and that was their recommendation for language.
And then on top of that, I think our general liability is 10 million.
And there's indemnification beyond the $5 million. So if they do, whatever they do have, that would be beyond the $5 million.
In both, in both entities, obviously we have some governmental immunity.
Thank you for that clarification because I'm just like, something apps on our grounds. Thank you for that.
I have a question about use of the facility. So it's explicitly spelled out for one sport, one entity in here, which is baseball, for the Bloomfield baseball. Is there, like beyond that, how would prioritization of the fields be used? He's got, you know, we have issues already with soccer, like in this community where it's growing exponentially, which is great. We often don't have enough space for it. There is other things too. So I'm just trying to figure out why that one was chosen specifically as opposed to any others and how that would work in the future.
So in board policy?
Yeah.
It does single out Bloomfield baseball. And so that's why it was included as part of this?
But I think BHYSL is also spelled out for soccer too in board policy.
It might be, but they don't typically use Pine Lake for the practice or scrimmages and things like that. There's been concerns over the years with the neighbors on the tree, it can run the name of the street, and all the parking that's taking place. So typically that's not really used for soccer.
And one of the reasons BBL puts in a sizable investment in the field, they maintain it and they groom it. And that was part of their concern was if they don't, if they're not part of it anymore, their investment that they've invested every year goes away.
So from like an athletics perspective, from the district for bike, right? Like does, do we feel like in terms of utilization, there's anything beyond what's scoped in here that we'd say, yeah, in five years it'd be nice if we would need additional whatever things?
So we did a parks and rec survey of the community and the community had an opportunity to weigh in, what would you like to see at Pine Lake?
Yeah.
And what would you potentially like to see at Lone Pine? So we tried to stay true to that with the things and amenities that they really wanted on a community-wide basis.
Okay.
Trustee Kohler?
So question on insurance, talk about a $5 million threshold that recommended by your insurance broker. Is that reviewed on a, every few years for limits or coverage or adequacy? Should something be, some kind of escalation be put in there?
I know that that was the recommendation that did come through the cooperative, which we are in a cooperative pool for the commercial insurance. I wouldn't be opposed to putting in language in there.
It looks like it says not less than- Correct. But if we're concerned, I mean, I understand-
The commission has already said that they have 10 now.
They weren't a-
Their interest is to protect themselves because of the indemnification and this is all related to-
And everyone has governmental immunity as well.
Versus the school district, I think, but-
But if it's a, I mean, if it's a concern, we could talk about, I do that sometimes in like easements because easements are perpetual. So sometimes we put a mountain, we'll say, unless requested by the district from time to time, you know, in a reasonable way. We could add one line that makes everyone more comfortable, if you guys will be comfortable. I mean, I know you probably comfortably don't comfortable. You guys are comfortable with that.
Yeah.
We can write in there about the annual reporting and review of insurance.
My guess is every year, you know, we would, we would be issuing an insurance certificate to you, to the school board anyways, to prove that, you know, and we're very similar to you. We're in what's called MMRA, which is the Michigan Minstrel Risk Association. We're a pooled insurance company with all different municipalities throughout the city, throughout the state. So very similar to what you guys have through the schools.
Yeah.
Yep. That was my only question. So is there a request from the board to add that additional language? Because we need to know because we'd like to get this voted on at the next board meeting. So looking for some type of direction as to yes, we want that included or we're satisfied with the document as is.
Additional language saying, stating that they will provide us with a certificate of insurance each year?
That's already in there.
Yeah, that's already, I think that's already in there.
Just to include the annual report. To allow the amount to increase.
It doesn't necessarily have to increase, it just needs to be assessed every year.
Well, the ability to increase it if necessary.
Right, yeah, if necessary, yeah. Looking for other trustees?
As long as, I mean, for me, as long as the commission is fine with, as long as it doesn't hold it up, that I'm okay. Against it.
Yeah, I'll get it for it.
All right, so if you could try-
I'll do it tomorrow morning.
With their attorney?
I'll give a new line tomorrow morning.
And give it and just send it directly to Greg and-
Yeah, that's fine. No problem.
Any other questions? Trustee Kohler?
No question.
Sorry. All right. Thank you, Dana, Joe, Kelly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds good. You guys, would you like to have a kind of a synopsis of our next steps then after your approval?
That would be great, absolutely.
So once it's approved by the school board, we will then tag it to our June meeting for our commission for approval. Once that's approved, we'd like to have some sort of-
Ribbon cutting.
Ribbon cutting in which our commission and the school board and some dignitaries from the township could be there. And so we can have kind of a ribbon cutting. And our, our goal would be to take kind of ownership or operations in August, first of August. But I'd like to get it done before the end of July, some sort of ribbon cutting ceremony where we'd have a sign and get that all going. The other aspect of this, I'm trying to think, was there one more thing I missed that we needed to talk about? Is that it? I think that's it.
We can make that happen, we'll work with Karen Hugie from Communications.
Yeah, the only, the only other hesitation I got to give Jake about playground removals, that would be the only thing.
Okay.
So we talked about doing that jointly together this summer.
Yeah, that is something we're still committed to do. Absolutely. So we can work the schedule so it works for both of us.
Yep.
And get that taken care of. And do you have another copy of the notes from the meeting I can give to Dr. Salwar?
Oh, I wrote down my only copy, so somebody else has one. Or I can email it over electronically.
We can email it.
If you send it to me, I'll make sure all the board members have it.
All right.
All right, thank you.
I do have one more question.
Oh, sorry.
Dana, in section 22 regarding the termination for convenience?
Yes.
The guiding, with one year notice, we can terminate, then there's, do we have defining language in here regarding what a major capital improvement is?
No, we'll have to discuss it at the time because it's going to be hard to know when we don't know exactly what they're doing at this point.
Is there any mechanism in here that requires us to approve whatever that is so that we can get ahead of that?
No, they're allowed to do, the answer is not really. They have the right to make changes to the, to the fields and to the park to make it a municipal park.
Okay. Because my concern is if the district was to decide this is an asset they wanted to release, they wanted to do it in 18 months.
Right.
There wasn't communication regarding what was going to be improved upon it and it happened to be major and significant. And then we're stuck that if we want to terminate, that we're obligated to reimburse for that amount.
Right, in the pro rata amount, but yeah.
And we have it internally already itemized out if the board would like to see some of our notes and with our proposed budget because we have to put it in operationally as well as our capital. And so it's less than, it's less than a half a million of capital and-
And we, and we could look at what our, accounting-wise, what our capital improvement line item is, depreciation is, there's a certain, there's a certain threshold that anything's over, and I want to say it's 2,500 is the threshold. So anything below 2,500, we would probably not look at as a major capital improvement.
Okay.
So, you know, but most, I'll just list off a few things of items. Pickleball courts and tennis courts renovations, you're looking at around $70,000. That's a major renovation.
Yeah.
We would look at that as a major. A parking lot, $150,000. That would be a playground of $80,000. Those, I think those are what we're looking at, major renovations.
Redoing the baseball field.
Yeah.
Bring that up to par.
You know, so I think, I don't think it's going to be too hard to decipher, especially if we went off of just maybe the depreciation schedule from our accounting. And I would imagine it's pretty similar to yours too, if you guys have to depreciate stuff.
And originally there wasn't even a term for convenience. We threw that in obviously so that if you want to use it for whatever reason and you need it back or you want to sell it, whatever the reason is.
Yep.
You at least have the right to get out, but then you're going to have a discussion over what amount is owed.
Got it, okay.
Yep. But also keep in mind if we did, if the district exploded, the birth rate exploded, we also have the Lone Pine property, which is a great place for an elementary school. So that would still be available as well.
Right.
And when you look at the demographics and the way the housing market is moving, it seems more likely if we need a new elementary school because of enrollment, the Fox Hills site would, would be where that elementary school would go.
I guess I was thinking of it less in terms of growth numbers, which could be a scenario, and it sounds like we have a great option for that. And more along the lines of if we needed to liquidate that, we needed that money instantly.
We also have the waterfront, we have 300 feet of prime waterfront property.
Right.
That is also available.
And I would also say, if you're liquidating, we have first right of refusal in this agreement that our commission would definitely look at that possibility.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks. Have a good night, thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Dr. Salwar, I'll turn it back over to you.
All right, so we're on to item. All right, so we're on to item 3B, letter of intent for the Nature Center, land acquisition. Dana, turn it over to you.
So in the board packet, in the update, there is information as far as the land acquisition proposal. And so hopefully everyone had a chance to look at that. Are there questions about the land acquisition proposal, which would then become part of Alan, if you want to talk a little bit about at the end, as far as the ask, what we're looking for from the board?
Sure. Yeah, there's a lot of information here and really it was meant to be an update to you since the last time we met. Pretty exciting things have happened. In the room here is Aaron Watson, who's the president of our friends, the Johnson Nature Center, an integral in helping us through this. Certainly we don't know that we have, whether or not we will get the grant from the DNR, the trust fund acquisition grant. But I did in the first slide put a timeline. So June or July should be when we know whether or not our sort of the due diligence period starts. That being said, I put some information which was included in the grant application. And you'll notice that the property is on the market for 1.2 million. The grant will pay for 75% of the appraised value. We don't know what that appraised value is at this time. We're making an assumption that's around 1.2 million. That would come once we move into that due diligence period. That being said, we still based our numbers on that 1.2 million. And with good advice from the DNR coordinator who said there had been projects where they went off the SEV and turned out they didn't, they didn't ask enough grant funding and then it was, it was done. So, so at this point, just want to give you that, that heads up. We have a number of local organizations who have pledged in support of the grant, grant application. That was required. But I guess I'll go to the ask. The ask is to authorize the superintendent or designate him forward with this recommended course of action. That letter from Clark Hill, Sonquist put together, it's in your folder. Fortunate for us, he's been around the last two times we've applied for a trust fund grant. So this will be the third one and has quite a bit of knowledge. The, to be able to have the conversation with the seller, and the reason we want the conversation is because the seller could choose to donate or reduce the price of the land below appraised value, thereby going towards our 25% needed to acquire the property. We can't have that conversation, one, what I'm not authorized to, the superintendent is not authorized to at this time, correct?
Right.
Until you all vote to allow that to happen. But also the seller wants to see it in writing. And so we're looking to first designate the superintendent and then second, allow Rick Sunquist to move forward with drafting some kind of communication, whether that's a letter of intent. Again, please read the letter, it's all there. He put it together pretty succinctly. So that we may move forward.
So Alan, according to the letter from Clark Hill, the non-binding LOI for legal advice is not truly non-binding according to the attorney. So the attorney's feedback is to consider three alternatives for our proposal, option to purchase, write a first refusal, for a purchase agreement with a large number of Do you have a recommendation among those three, the order of priority?
Yes. Speaking with other nonprofits, Six Rivers Land Conservancy and others who've been through this process, the purchase agreement with the conditions and contingencies is sort of the standard. So that would be my recommendation. I don't think I have a second favorite.
Okay, purchase agreement, okay.
The LOI was prepared by the listing agent's broker and sent to us. So we, we had no hand in what that language was. But obviously we sent, it was not what we wanted.
So your suggestion would be to put forth a purchase agreement or authorize the superintendent to put forth a purchase agreement proposal to the seller?
Correct.
It would be a PA with very, very heavy contingencies. Basically, if any- In a normal situation, if you were buying a home and you had these people, they'd laugh at you, right? But the point is not, not, it's to keep the district in a position where we're not committed, right? But we show enough interest to the seller that we can get to the table and negotiate and be able to discuss, right? Because right now we're sort of in this, we don't have the grant, so we can't really move forward. So we don't, we can't make a commitment to buy it because we don't, you know what I mean? It's like we kind of have the chicken and the egg situation. So this would be heavy contingencies where if any one of the mechanisms for us that we say, oh, this is not going to work, the grant didn't work out, appraisal was off, like whatever it is, you would have a way to then say, we're out without any risk other than whatever it would take for us to have the lawyer draft a PA to our liking. So that's really the risk involved.
The risk of not doing it is that it's on the market.
Yep.
And as we wait, it could be purchased by a developer. I have to say, we have, from what, what I've seen and the folks I've talked to, overwhelming community support for this project. In fact, we've had a number of verbal commitments for the match funding. They're not in writing, I'm not going to talk about them here, but it's quite exciting. After the last meeting, I had folks ring me up the next day and say, how can we, how can we help? We love the Nature Center. We want to, we want to see this happen.
Is there an internal, within administration, a preference of those three options to pick?
I'm a supporter of balanced recommendation.
Okay.
I want something that protects the district at all costs, so funds aren't expanded unless they meet strict guidelines. Other questions? So we would be, Alan, next board meeting?
Bring this to the next board meeting for a vote.
So this would be a request would be to bring to the next board meeting for a vote, kind of like we're doing with the agreement with WB Parks.
Sounds good. Good. Thank you. Wait, somebody has something else.
Sorry. Thank you, Alan.
All right, Dr. Salwar, turn it back over to you.
So thank you Superintendent Watson. We're going to move on to item 3C, the superintendent's search. We wanted to make sure we were being as, providing as we can as possible. Steve and I were able to meet with the firm of MLI regarding our session that's scheduled for May 17th to give the board a little bit of a perspective as to the things that will be discussed during that time. We will, at that time, we will go over the draft of how the search will be outlined. He will provide us with information, how we will move forward as far as various different parts of the search. He will also cover information and guidelines around his perspective associated with the national search. He will also be providing us with information as to how he'll work with the community, with the students, with our communications department. I made your whole department here, you like that. Whole, the entire timeline will be discussed with the actual full board. So no decisions were made in our conversation, just getting some clarity to make sure we're all set for the meeting on the 17th. Did I, did you want to add anything to the? The timeframe will be about two to three hours, so please plan accordingly.
Yeah, please plan for-
Two to three hours.
You said the board's has been four and a half, or the longest? So please plan for a three-hour session.
Was this the time on the agenda that we were going to talk about? Paul had some questions or is that another?
No, we're going to talk about the questions, we can talk about that when he brings his update for the students. Just because Paul isn't here and I told him we would, make sure we's able to have that.
I just wanted to make sure that that was-
We can always come back if he's got some other questions, but we weren't going into detail, but he'll-
He can provide that when he comes back.
I want to defer this topic to Paul, Paul gets it. Is that a yes?
Yes.
That's fine. We'll move to come back to this conversation when, when Paul gets back. Is everyone else in agreement to that? Or are you okay? All right. We're okay. Moving on, item number 3D, diversity assembly investigation committee update.
You want me to give you? So the committee is scheduled to meet with the law firm, Jamark, Owens and Horton, Thursday May 18th to go over the findings that they've obtained through a series of interviews and documentary discovery requests. At that meeting, we'll determine if any investigation, any additional investigation needs to be done. And find out when we can expect to receive their report and discuss any next steps. The committee wants it to be clear though, that the committee nor the board has recommended any discipline, termination, resignation, or retirement of any employees, which includes the superintendent. Just for the, the public, I know there's a lot of rumors swirling around. This committee, nor the board, has taken any action at this point. We're waiting for this, this report to come out and then see what's going on and then we'll, we'll work on maybe some policy updates, things like that, make sure.
Any questions from any other board members?
All right. No questions, we'll move on to item number 3E, board committee liaison, or, oh, wait, we'll come back to that one because Paul's not here yet. We'll move on to item F, naming of Eastover and Lone Pine sites. Superintendent Watson?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Salwar. Mr. Shulkin, I will turn it over to you. Naming of Eastover and Lone Pine sites.
Yeah, before you and I'll count on my other colleagues as well. This is some of the other recommendations, a possible sample survey, a little bit of the process to move forward with naming both of those buildings. As you might recall, we need to go ahead and move these, we need to rename these buildings, both for our safety and security requirements as well as just general operations within the district. So Karen Hugie, if there's anything you wanted to highlight here for the- So Karen Yuki, if there's anything you wanted to highlight here for the board?
No, I think that document kind of speaks for itself, based on the last study session. We put together a timeline, complete with naming recommendations, and a sample survey for the board to review and then make a decision on if you want us to implement these items. We did have time to meet with different members of administration, including the supervisor of our early childhood programs, around naming preferences. There is a support from administration around renaming the spaces into early childhood center. Whether the board, if the board is, is, would like that feedback from us, that would be our preference, whether it's Blumen, Bloomfield Hills, what our preference would be to call it an early childhood center, that allows it to be inclusive of both preschool and infant care. And, so the survey's in there, it's a similar survey as what we've administered for past practice, the format's in there and the audience is in there, and so the board can review and make any recommendations, revisions, and then we'll move forward, we'll go over your plans.
Any discussion?
I'm supportive of the proposal. Glad you're joining here. Thank you.
I see a lot of nodding, a lot of head shaking.
Okay, yeah.
I'm excited to see what the survey shows, and I can't wait to hear feedback from the community. It's an exciting time to be here, and in 50 years, hopefully these new centers, or whatever they are called, are still here. So I'm excited to be a part of it.
Thank you Karen and your team.
Okay, so we'll move forward and we'll start with the survey being administered next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then noting that this will come to the board meeting in June for the approved app at that time.
But we'll share the results ahead of time?
Yeah.
In a board update, so you have the opportunity to review it and give feedback with that.
Yeah, so the June 2nd board update, you'll receive the survey results, the survey will be open from next week through the end of May, and then you'll have all of that to be able to review for a vote on the following regular board meeting.
So, one question, is the survey just going to be something that people need to access on their own at the website, or is it going to be an email that goes out, or how's it, how's it going to be communicated?
So it'll be in the regular communication channels, it'll go out in the weekly update, along with state of the staff, it'll be on our website, it'll be on social media. I put in here that we would put it on social media on May 17th and May 29th, it'll be in the weekly newsletters on May 15th, 22nd and 29th, it'll remain on the website from the 15th through the 31st on the homepage, and then I'll work with Lisa Greig Lapp, our supervisor of early childhood, to be able to administer to current families at Blumen to make sure that they receive that directly.
What are you thinking?
Just, could you enlarge the font on the, on the newsletter a little bit, just so we make sure that people see it?
Maybe bold it, add a picture, something.
We can, I can also draft some content for the principals to include it in their weekly update in the top section, at least one of the three weeks, and then they'll include it at the very top with a direct link, and then that gives them the freedom to put it in on a week that works for their schedule with all of the other information they're trying to share, but would also allow us to have it kind of front and center, knowing that a lot of families read building level communications a little bit more thoroughly than district level communications.
I picked up, preschools also have a newsletter that goes out.
Yes.
That goes out.
Yes.
I just remember gaining mine, so it's not that long ago.
Trustee Noble?
I just had a thought, I know that Kimberly Hampton mentioned how early childhood center would be appropriate, I don't know, maybe we could get some information, what the administration thinks is appropriate for a name as well, so they can weigh those, that feedback as well.
We have the opportunity to take the survey as well.
Oh, okay.
But we definitely want it to be a community-wide opportunity to participate, and, you know, we're not going to bring forward, you know, the Mickey Mouse program, or something that is not appropriate, or has a copyright, or a trademark, too.
Oh, yeah. That's good.
In that cabinet, we discussed in detail kind of some options, and we were all, as a consensus, comfortable with early childhood center, whether it be, you know, Blumen, maintaining that, or moving forward with Bloomfield Hills. I know that trustee Colan had expressed interest in maybe wanting it associated with the school district, district a little bit last meeting, so we wanted to make sure that we included that in there as well. But if, we're, we're really in favor of that early childhood center.
Okay, that's good, feedback to know.
Yeah.
Karen, I'll add just a little bit of history, too, and I think it might be important to consider, we went through a branding process when we launched the preschools in the district, and Blumen, and its evolution over the years around that, and I think there's a real desire to try to keep that, that kind of branding that we spent a lot of time and effort on, that goes out to a variety of media sources and distribution endpoints. And so it's worth considering about that branding piece. If it's just district-oriented, keep in mind that we have a lot of families aren't just, the district doesn't matter, it's Blumen, it's a different brand, and they're coming from out of district or all over places. It's just something to keep in mind.
Thank you.
Dr. Salver, turn it back over to you.
Okay, welcome trustee Colan, how are you today?
Good.
Awesome, we'll let you get settled in a little bit there.
I'm settled.
That's okay. We're going to move to item, go back to item.
A little bit, you already want to do G, and give trustee Colan a chance to settle in.
We'll do that, let's go to the development, the development of the B H testing and assessment calendar.
Great, so Mrs. Conker, learning service team put that together as far as, just like a chart of understanding, when we're assessing, the area of focus and the description, are there any questions about the assessment calendar that's taking place during the 22, 23 school year? And hopefully it gives you an idea of what we're doing, when we're doing it, and a little bit to the why.
Yes, this was very helpful, it's on our previous conversations, it's a nice roadmap, so thank you for preparing it.
Any questions? Seena, right, thank you Karen, have a nice night. We'll see you in the morning.
Thank you. Okay.
Dr. Salver, back to you.
Thank you, we're going to go back to item C, superintendent's search update, and so we wanted to circle back regarding the conversation on the students' participation. Trustee Colan?
So I'm at the committee report, so.
No, not, not the, we're on the superintendent's search, or you want to go straight to your student report?
No, I mean, I don't want to jump around, so, so.
Which one?
Either or, I mean, I guess, I guess the question came up, so, at the last meeting with the student interns, we went through sort of a summary of the year in review, and they obviously only have, you know, a few weeks left. And, obviously, the nature of the program is to get student feedback on critical things that the board's doing. So, the discussion, you know, with all three of us on the committee and the students, was there are a couple of critical things that are happening in the next, however long, that we would like student feedback on. One would be, as we're going to go out to the community, and that's going to be probably in the summertime, to try to get what the community's characteristics are of a superintendent. One thought was, well, can we, in this limited time period, get what would the students' characteristics be that they would be looking for in a superintendent? And also, since it's obviously, it impacts students, building principal, so, so the students thought that'd be a great idea, very motivated to do that, so they drafted and sent to the committee, sort of their two questions, that would go out to the students, you know, in the building, in the high school, and respectively, probably also at the International Academy, relative to the students in Bloomfield would be, what are your five characteristics that you would look for in a superintendent? What are your five characteristics you would look for in a principal? I know it went to the committee, seemed like two harmless questions that, you know, would be fine to go out, you know, didn't, didn't think anything of it. And so, they went forward and were, tried, were, I guess, going to work with the building on the best way to get that feedback, they thought, you know, as opposed to focus groups, we talked about this in the meeting, they talked about focus, was probably the best way to do that would be a survey, and those two, and it would be those two questions that would go out and get that feedback back, and however they compiled it, they would probably bring it to us, which would, which would be probably presented to them, by them, you know, in a meeting with us, you know, to the board. So I know they reached out, sent an email to all of us, seemed fine, I was under the impression that it was going to go out, because we are, you know, we did arrange to meet with them next week, I guess, for whatever reason, it was held up, it was, you know, the email has not gone out, so the students read, and I didn't, I wasn't aware that it didn't go out, or it was to the reason why. So they reached out to me, and I said, we're having a meeting tonight, we would discuss it as a board, and if we, as a board, think that those two questions are fine, then we would get back to them on next steps.
So, part of the reason that I would, would have guessed that the survey did not move forward was because it did not come to the board for conversation. So, with the questions being presented, and there were a few opportunities for us to have had that dialogue about the directive that.
Was it, wasn't it, wasn't it a directive?
The collaboration that was had between trustees and the students.
Well, I did send an email out to the board last week.
With five questions.
With, well, no, an email out of what exactly was happening with those two questions, that was sent out on May 3rd, and I got no feedback back from any colleagues here on, on if there were any issues or anything. Or, what would have been nice, at least for, for me, to at least let the students know that, please note, it's being held up, we, you know, we prefer to talk about it at the meeting on the 11th, because now that, you know, from a student perspective, I would have liked, right, you could blame me for the lack of community, like, I guess the next meeting we had was that day, right, and we had a study session, we were probably talking, I, I forgot what was on the agenda, so it was probably too late to put it on the agenda, maybe I should have made an amendment to talk about it, and I guess we, we had a, I don't even know if we had a committee report, you know, in that meeting, I thought, you know, maybe it was just a study session. But let, let's say you could put that on me, not, but I thought, once it was made to my attention that the full board didn't know, and I sent out the note, I would have liked to probably got some feedback, said, all right, we're going to hold up this until we discuss it at this meeting.
I thought I did respond and include such, that we would have a conversation at the board.
Yeah, I didn't, well, I didn't realize that, that the communication to go out to the students was going to be stopped, I didn't, you know, like, I didn't realize that, but.
Well, moving past, what's happened?
Yep.
What's the goal?
The goal is.
The goal is that the students get surveyed, correct?
And, and we gather that, we gather best we can before, especially the seniors leave.
Okay, so you're, so the, the key issue is, you think that the exiting seniors need to be polled regarding this issue?
I think it's fair, right?
Okay.
You know, it's, it's fair that, you know, for them to have some input into the process.
When Sid and I met with MLI, they did indicate that they would move forward with working with the students immediately, so since the students do have a month left of, of school, there will be some time in which, when we meet on the 17th, they would be willing to start immediately with meeting with the students.
Well, seniors only have two weeks left.
So can we communicate to them when we meet next week, number one priority is get the feedback of the outgoing seniors?
Yeah, because if we wait until summer, I mean, not just the seniors, but if it goes in the summer, then you get none, right? And then we move on, we build a profile, and we have no student feedback until fallen kids back out.
Right, so first priority is students who are graduating in two weeks, second priority is students who are following the rest of the schedule, and they'll conduct that for us and make sure that their voices are heard, right?
I would agree that it's important to hear from students that are graduating, but I think it's even more important for the students who have to be here and work with the superintendent, or.
What about the eighth graders?
What?
What about the eighth graders, they're going to be in high school next year?
Yeah, I don't know.
You know, I mean, there's a lot of questions, I mean, I just.
No, we're not saying, I don't think it was not, it was one or the other, it was just that not only would we never get the seniors, but it's summertime, we're not going to get kids, right? So we're going to start, like, working on this, and not have attributes from a student perspective, we're going to make this, because we're already going to have a meeting on 17, 18, whatever day it is, and, like, we're moving forward, right? And I would think that one of the first things we would do is start to solicit feedback, community plus kids.
Right, that's, that's what, that's what MLI is going to do.
Yes, they're.
Yeah, but if we don't do, the whole point is, if we don't do it now, we're not going to be able to.
Oh, they, they are ready.
So, but yeah, but.
Rebecca and Karen already have the website.
I, I guess.
Perspective, they are ready to hit the, hit the button when we meet on the 17th and decide.
My thought is, if they put their feedback in to this, this survey, but then they don't put it in this other space.
One repository.
Like, they're, they're in danger of having their voices not heard, like, because it's gone into like, a place where it's not being compiled by the firm that we hired to handle.
And the firm said that one of the things that they brought up was having a place that is non-district associated, right? And so, having one place where, where it's collected, whether it's community feedback, teacher feedback, or it's not associated with the district, allows for there to be, you know, look at more fair responses for all the students, honest responses for the students, and the community.
Keep, keep in mind at the time, right, you know, at least the committee, we weren't aware that we were, I mean, there was thought about, we would hold up the process, which we didn't, of hiring a firm, right? So, we actually did expedite that and got affirmed. So, listen, if the message is to go back to them saying, want the feedback, want the senior feedback, that's, we have it, we have a firm that's now going to, you know, going to work with you on the best way to get that, then that'll be the, that'll be the feedback that I give to the students after this meeting tonight.
And it sounds like we're in consensus, that we're going to ask that they survey the seniors, so that even though they're not going to be here experiencing it, what we're saying is we value their opinions based on their experiences. Okay? Sid.
I think the feedback from John Sever at MLI was that they have a survey that they can adapt based on our feedback, and they can go live in a matter of days, again, we'll let him speak to them, and have the same questionnaire, you know, address, you know, get student feedback, community feedback, Karen's feedback, and that could go live in a matter of days.
But, I, I do want, we do have, in this year, right, we do have the student board interns, I, I do want MLI to work with them, right? And whether or not they agree, they all agree that it's this, this, these questions, but I do want these seven students, right, to, to work with MLI, and at a consensus, come up with what they think the best feedback questions are. Not MLI say, this is what we're going to do for students.
No, I was not the example. So, sorry, go ahead.
One of the things that they, they will work with is a face-to-face conversation with the student leaders that we elect for them to meet with.
Yeah.
And so I think that if we decided that the student board interns are one of those groups, and it probably even maybe some other student leaders, and to John's point, what about those eighth grade students that we aren't having those conversations with, maybe we should figure out how they are also included in this process, right? So there are some other stakeholders that we want to make sure we're not leaving out.
I don't.
Are you going to say something?
Yes, so one of the data points that MLI will get, when they, when they do these surveys, and they do them across different stakeholder groups, when you have the same consistency of questions, you're going to get this profile that will show, staff is looking here, they're on this part of the continuum, but community's way over here, students fall in the middle. And we talk about leadership skills, it's going to be over here, when you talk about management skills, it shifts, and so, they're able to take this survey that they vetted out, that will then pull all of their data together to help you create a profile, without being able to overlap that, it becomes very difficult to make, to make a profile, because now you have this profile, you have this profile, and this profile, and then they don't, they don't match up, you don't have any common data points to pull.
Again, I'm not saying we, we end up going there, I would like, as opposed to them saying, this is what we're doing for the students, forget, I want the leaders, right, who we designate, it's not necessarily just the board interns, maybe, they could, remember they put together the student senates at the middle school, maybe they could designate people from the various middle schools as well. You know, I want them to have a seat at the table to work with our search firm, and, you know, agree on a good set of questions for students. That's, that's, that's the intent of the program.
Another good thing we could do to empower them in the process is encourage them to, on their own, come up with, you know, plan to be at the meetings, public meetings, where there's public comment, questions, empower them to come up with questions to ask and appear, show it that way, that's another great opportunity for them to be heard as well.
Right. Another way is, have them brainstorm ideas as to getting participation, you know, in, in the survey. And so, my thought is, not everyone's going, you know, not every student's going to take this survey, how do we encourage all students to participate?
No, that's, that's an excellent point, so MLI can say, right, if they're going to distribute it, however they're going to do, they could periodically check in and say, you only got 15%, right? So what, what do we need to do to encourage? Is there another communication that we can get out? What, what, what do you think?
Yeah, they can work with the students.
Would cause students to fill it out, as opposed to not? That's the whole, right, the whole idea, and we're going to go through interviews of the new group in a second, you know, it's. the new group in a second, you know, it's, how do you get student feedback? We don't know, they're the ones who have to come up with the innovative ideas to get it.
And I mean, they've got the experience on best practices and how to, to run this exercise with kids.
Yep. All right.
So you want to just continue to your update?
I guess I'll continue, so, so I'll just get it all out. So, so right now, thanks to, thanks to Rebecca, we're, we're, we're moving along in, in our process, in terms of, we've got the applications back, you know, I don't know how she did it, but somehow you click off a link and it has their application res, I mean, I'm sure there's some, you know, but it, it's very intuitive for us. So right now, we've agreed, you know, with past practices, you know, we have a set amount that we're going to interview, over the course of two days, we're going to interview all the candidates. We're going to do it next Monday and Thursday, is that what we agreed? Right? John, me, Eric.
That's the need to confirm.
Okay, no, all right, so maybe we have, but I'm saying, we have, we have two dates, we have two dates on the calendar.
Set on the due, like, your dates.
I know, that was when I didn't consider that we're going to have a five-hour board meeting.
Interviews will be next week.
Interviews will be, interviews will be next week, and, 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 and will be.
You said five hours, you said four.
It's.
I'm setting the bar low and then hopefully.
Yeah, so, so, so interviews are going to be next, you know, the next two weeks, and then we'll probably leverage the rubric, right, from last year. That's one thing I think the committee, the three of us need to meet on is, if we want to tweak the rubric from last year.
I would like to.
And so I guess we do, but, I mean, I'm just saying that, so, but we have time to do that, so we can interview, before the interview, we'll set up some time, maybe the three of us, to kind of go through the rubric and what's going to be our criteria, and then from there, you know, we'll obviously have similar, I think last year was unique, because I think it was a tie, we had three, but we're going to go back to two, and five advisory council members, seven in total.
That's the goal.
That's the goal. Last year, there was like ties, and everyone was good, so, yeah, I know, we wanted everyone. So we went, but the goal is two and five, seven.
I mean, they real, like, I was blown away by.
Oh, you will be, wait till you interview them, you're going to be like, what?
I'm like, looking at these and.
Is there an administrator that gets them way in?
In the past, and I don't know, it was Pat, but, you know, I mean, and based on his schedule, it's up, you know, it's up to him if he wants to be a part of it or not, but in the past, it always was Pat.
And all the candidates are beyond fantastic, it's like you're hiring someone, you know, to run, to run a submarine or something, they're all overqualified, it's unbelievable.
Never had it, you know, compared to running a submarine, but.
Okay, I, I, the point being, you know.
First one who's ever.
You're attracting high.
Brand. Those who actually know how to do.
Honestly, I would say it's more than that. The, the, they're good students, that's great, these are good people. These, these are young people that give me hope, these are young people that I would be willing to do anything for, work for, help them with anything, and the abilities they have at such a young age actually makes me feel hopeful about the future. Because if these are the type of kids that are going to be in leadership positions in this country, things will get better, we will be okay. They, we had the debate about whether or not we should even spend time interviewing, whether that's going to be beneficial, and knowing that's going to be a skill they'll need later in life. I don't know, well, I'll speak for myself, the, the interviews were short, I could have easily spent an hour to two hours on a call with each individual person. And when we got down to the three-way tie, the scores were all super high, and the people that were just a little bit underneath, barely. Probably run into the situation where you really, everyone's overqualified for the positions that you have. We have amazing young students in this district, they're just amazing.
Yep, so, yeah, so I, I think we'll tweak the rubric, no matter, right, I think regardless, to Pat's point, I mean, we have an abundance, luckily, of, you know, great candidates, again, which we've always, always had, whoever we end up choosing, I'm, I'm sure.
It's brilliant.
I mean, they'll be, they'll be a great group.
Yeah.
And so, you know, that's, the next step is just tightening up the rubric, and then just confirming the two dates that we're going to have to interview the candidates, and then.
What? It'll be next Monday and Thursday.
It'll be Monday and Thursday, and then you're going to bring it back, the recommendation on the 25th.
Sure.
And then the board will vote on the 25th using reference codes for student names.
AB, yeah, correct.
And the next step after that is on June 8th, then we'll be appointing those students.
Correct. And then, to the point, like, if we're in a transition, right, as the, the old ones work with MLI, we could bring, obviously, both can be in transition, especially these two critical things that are going on in the district. Okay, that's, that committee update.
Carolyn, you want to get on this committee at some point, and I can probably.
You will.
Most fulfilling thing. As far as they can do these kids.
Absolutely.
I enjoy it.
That's right, Sid was on, Michelle was on, John was on.
I still talked to some of the former students that were board interns.
Yeah, I know, they've come back, correct, yes, and two of them, I mean, again, during the first superintendent search, we, we had, I think it was just, was it just two?
It was two.
It was only two, right, before we had the advisory council. And I, I do remember the board meeting, we brought them up to the board, you know, like, they made a recommendation, and they two articulated as to why they made a recommendation based on all the feedback they got, and it was probably, you know, when, when it came out to us, as, as just a powerful statement on, on the program itself. You know, how they went back getting the feedback, and, and that's why it's just important to me now, making sure this group, which they're, they're remarkable itself, right? We had a great meeting the other day, they, they will work with our search firm, and they will get great student feedback that we can use. All right, sorry.
No, it's always the most exciting topic it likes to me, so thank you for that, thank you for your comment. Any discussion, any other questions? Okay. We're on to item 3H.
Mathematics.
Yes, so K through 12 mathematics pathways, I will turn it over to Mr. Bivlak, Ms. Fairman, and Ms. Hampton.
And thank you, in your board packet, we included some information around really a concept that we're striving for, so speaking of great students, what we're looking to do is expand and shape our pathways in mathematics, to be able to redesign that in a way that will allow much more access to our students to achieve at the highest levels and be able to get into our AP, IB, and our college preparatory classes for math. And I'm just realizing, if we could pass this around to Paul. Thank you, I just realized I didn't leave one over.
Well, is it, is it in the, is it in the packet?
Yeah, but it's like the shortened version. Well, what I did is I printed out like three pages, because I sort of thought that our conversation might stem around specifically the sequencing and how the program, like, how a student might move through that programming. So I just printed out those three pages, but in your board packet is a bit of more information that includes how we would phase everything in, because when we're looking at that sequencing, as we look at the day, you know, we wouldn't be able to move into all of that in one year, or rather, how we would phase into that, primarily around, because we want to build that as students are ready to move in to those directions. So we're really looking forward to being able to leverage a new middle school schedule to open up that pathway and move kids into an opportunity and greater access into these incredible courses, as well as create and adopt a few more courses. So in the handout that I gave you, I pulled out the elementary, middle, and high school sequence, so you wouldn't have to flip through the different pages. I thought that might be a little bit more helpful, and Sarah and Kimberly are going to help us go through the elementary and secondary models of that, and we might as well start with Emily, or start with elementary, Kimberly, so if you want to jump into this portion.
Absolutely.
So we'll, we'll just do like a brief run-through, and then see what type of questions that we might have, is that okay?
Yeah, I, I love, since everyone's had a chance to look at it, and then you can take questions, yes.
Absolutely. So I'm at the top of the packet, with elementary, K-5 mathematics, and what this does in a nutshell is that we're looking to expand the models of differentiation that occur in our classrooms, both with the way teachers are resourced to do that, their primary curriculum right now is Envision, and while also thinking about the ways that our learning specialists and building interventionists, which are current staff in our schools, are able to more closely and in targeted ways support mathematics. So you see a continuum here that starts in the classroom, that also includes our current grade-up math acceleration model, which has been in place in Bloomfield for quite a bit here. What you see described there is current state. And then at the bottom two boxes, you see some descriptions for third, fourth, and fifth graders, that include ways that they would both work in their classrooms as well as outside of their classrooms with specialists in the school, to think about the ways that they can experience more regular application-based work, collaborate with peers around mathematical challenges, and in some cases, at the highest level of the elementary school, which, as you know, these students are currently sitting in the middle school buildings, have access to like-minded peers as they grapple with some, some complex math work. We know a lot of research around how students come together in cohorts to problem solve, to take on some independent study that's guided by practitioners, and that's what you see described there, and that it means math investigations element. So along with a curricular review that's up a year from now, that kind of sits alongside this model for extension and acceleration that you see on the first page for elementary. Imagine you have some questions about that, and decide if you want to question elementary, if you want to move on to middle school and high school, and then kind of move into question mode afterwards. What is your preference?
Trusty Kumar.
So Kimberly, my question was, how is, how do these max from the fifth grade flow into the middle school?
And I think as Sarah shares the 6'8", that'll, that blending will become more apparent, but I'm glad that you asked that, because the fourth and fifth graders in particular, as they move into intermediate mathematics, not only are the standards much more robust within those two grade levels, but so does the, the difference, if you will, between students who feel real passionate and, and drawn to mathematics begin to become more apparent in the classroom. And so as we look at our assessment data, particularly on M-Step and FastBridge, we see a lot of indicators there that suggest that not only do we need some additional professional learning around reaching those edges of the classroom, but we also need to make sure that students have regular opportunity to be stretched within the boundaries of their, their grade, right? As opposed to only relying on advancing a grade, skipping a grade, we have a lot of students who, whether they want to take a grade-up experience or not, realize that there are things happening in their home classroom that they're going to be missing out on as a result of that experience. And so this descriptor is really meant for us to tackle that in a way that brings those experiences under the K-5 school umbrella. Our, our fifth grade has been challenged a bit in their sequence to be 5'8", right? They don't have access to, to peers in an upper elementary way, it's more traditional, where we think vertically about K-5. This four or five advanced investigation and independent study, as well as the classroom work from the first blue box, is going to really teed up, if you will, students who are ready for a middle school experience that begins to take a lot of different divergent options.
And so how do you cater to students at both ends of the spectrum? Well, how to cater to students at both ends of the spectrum, both the high end and the low end, high end I think is addressed here, what about the low end as well?
So right now, our learning specialists across each of the four elementary buildings, and, and I believe the middle school level, but I'm, I'm less familiar, as those specialists also are a course that our middle schoolers are scheduled into, so they have a little less access for elementary intervention time, because they're also directly serving sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students as there is a math class.
You're saying it's the current school configuration?
Yes, in our current school configuration. And so right now, for students who may not yet be at that grade standard, our learning specialists have all been trained in what's called math recovery, and they use data sources, classroom data, FastBridge data, to indicate who may be struggling with certain units and/or have some gaps or holes, which we certainly are seeing at the upper grades based on a year and a half of interrupted schooling, and usually work with small groups and/or directly support the teacher with additional resources that can be used in reteaching, or, you know, an alternate approach that might support a student who, who may be struggling with grade-level content at that time.
Do we need to start assessing student performance earlier? Like, is, is fifth grade too late? Do you start, need, you need to start assessing divergence maybe at the third grade, so they get good mediation earlier?
Oh, oh, yeah, so math intervention right now begins as early as first grade, if need to be. For students who may not have early numeracy, we don't begin with pulling children away from their classroom cohort quite that early, because a lot of these things that are happening in kindergarten and first grade are quite developmental, students progress in, in different rates. So usually that staff then are, are joining the teacher for some small group table time or a, a reteaching kind of approach. But we absolutely intervene for mathematics as early as, as any student data would indicate that in our elementary building currently. So what kind of, what, what, what sort of systems do we have in place to catch that student that's not below, not above, but teetering between not being above? Like, I'm almost at a break of falling in, in the lower category, but because I'm at a 473 and a 472 makes me at grade level. Like, what do we have in place to catch those students to make sure they don't fall below the threshold of being on target or, or successful in addition? Can I ask, when you share those numbers, I was speaking of FastBridge. I made up some numbers. Okay. Because I think, you know, one of. I made up those numbers? I ask that because one of our, our tools, FastBridge, does set a mark for students to be showing as, as, you know, proficient, as on-track, that becomes more rigorous as the year goes. So what, students might show up as on-track in September, might look different in January because the, the mark is changing, right? We expect more of them as the year goes. And so sometimes students who may be in, showing up one way with one certain group of concepts, two months later are looking real different as they move into fractions or division, or something that's perceptually completely different for them. We rely on the assessments that are within the toolkit of Envision in addition to FastBridge. So teachers are looking at those things before they're moving on. They are often in a case where there may be a question communicating with home, hoping that that homeschool partnership is real strong about what are you seeing, this is what I'm seeing. In cases that might trend toward concern, the building instructional team is usually what wraps around that student, where multiple data points might be looked at, typically looking at the student in elementary setting across the whole of their day, rather than subject by subject, and thinking about what are the strength areas that can be leveraged to boost up areas that are not yet as strong.
And I think also elementary students always are so interesting to teach, because they shoot up and then they plateau, and they shoot up and they plateau, and then, like, they don't ever dip. But, so that's why that, that FastBridge data is so helpful all the way throughout the year, it's because you might be catching a huge acceleration piece, or you might be hitting a plateau, and the plateau is there just momentarily, but sometimes that's what the data also will show up. Us is like, that's a, that's a chance to circle back and say, "This is unexpected," and you circle back on that.
So we do have points in place where we have, we're able to intervene to support the student at any point in their, for instance, second grade. Yeah, third grade. It is not a you're in or you're out kind of model in terms of intervention, in fact, our, our goal, as we look at our data district-wide, we have a three-point-a-year look, right, at the, at the start of October, when all the fresh information is there, our staff circle around that information, usually for two to three hours at times, do some digging in. Then they take that information, they go back and design what their small groups are going to be, they might reach out to specialists in the building for additional resources if they don't feel that what they have is equipping them appropriately. And then as we move into November, December, is another instructional cycle, they look again in January with a fresh set of information, and, and onward. I think the progress monitoring that we do with FastBridge, our staff have found to be very helpful, where a student might have a 400-something, and then that product gives us some targeted areas that students can practice with or revisit. Sometimes products like that, because of their computerized nature, have students that show up differently in that data set than they might with what's happening in the classroom. And in that case, our teachers are really getting into diagnostic mode about, "When I work with Michelle, do I see that this is really a concern, or is this just reflected in, in the neutral data point, or vice versa? Am I seeing something different in class, whereas on the computerized tool, they're, you know, way out and above? What, what's the discrepancy about here?" And sometimes that's student fatigue, sometimes it's where math instruction might be taking place in the day, lunch is in 15 minutes, done, done. place in the day, lunch is in fifteen minutes, done, done, done. But teachers are really looking at the variety of those factors to kind of discern what's the right next move.
Thank you. And thank you for that pressure of having to know the FastBridge's numbers next time I give this.
Oh, no, no, I'd never. I'd have to look them up myself.
Didn't know if there was a personal report you got or something?
I would know them next time, though.
So I have a question about, so looking at this, these advanced math investigations and math investigations, so the classroom teacher looks at classroom assessments and FastBridge data and determines, and determines based on what, who's in the top ten, like, who would qualify? Let's say every parent in classroom X thinks that their student should qualify for the math investigation or advanced math. What determination is needed for who is in this and who is not in this?
So to that description, I think what we would ask our school staff to do, would head to classroom X with some pretty extensive math experiences, perhaps even over a couple of hours, gauge aptitude for, you know, what I'm interested in, so to speak. If you're asking about a cut score, we're actually not going to make one. We're looking for students that are drawn into that experience because they're loving it, or perhaps mom or dad or family at home would like them to try that, or perhaps even their teacher sees something. So when we're talking about leaving the classroom in this case, we're really talking about one to two times a week in cooperation with what's happening in the classroom.
So perplexed.
I don't think I got the, like, so if I'm a parent and I want my student to be in this, is the answer yes? Or is there, like, I'm reading this as performance in math with classroom assessments and FastBridge data. So, but if I'm a parent, I'm like, my student is a superstar, I want this, is the answer yes? Or is the answer, it depends based on their scores? Because that's going to be a question that parents are going to ask.
Certainly. So I think we would ask the parent to have a conversation with their child's teacher to discuss all of what's happening in mathematics in that classroom, and that collaboratively they would determine what would be the best next spot for that student.
Similar to how we look at algebra for eighth grade, the parents receive a, this is where your, how your child is performing, this is what we're seeing in class, this is what your child's standardized score is. With this information, would you like to pursue Algebra I as an eighth grade option? Or would you like to be in Math A? So the idea is, like, it's not one data point that gets you in or out of anything, it's the idea that you are looking at all of our data that we have, which is both classroom observation, teacher input, standardized test scores.
And the only reason I bring this up is that you bring up middle school, because that was a concern years ago, where, like, well, who decided to get, like, it was the classroom teacher's decision, and then I think parents came back and said, well, why is it? You know, what, you know, how are we deciding that? And I think we made a decision that if anyone wanted to be, maybe, you know, right-
We're giving them a, we want parents and students to make an informed choice. So all that information is now provided to families, and they decide if they want to be in Math A or Algebra I.
Right. So we made that change, Trusty Kuhon, two years ago. Before, I think you were referring to taking a test, you scored X on the test, you could be in, it is no longer restricted to a single data point.
So my question is, to that point on this, I'm a parent with all the information presented, and I still say I want my child in grade up math in third grade, the answer will be yes.
Well, or in this advanced math, the teacher would be the gatekeeper in this particular circumstance, the way you're describing it, and what Paul's saying is, we chose against that.
I've not seen, I don't think we said that the teacher is the gatekeeper.
That was the interpretation that I got, because-
I would say the teacher is part of the person who you also speak with, in terms of, this is what the teacher is seeing, in terms of student engagement, this is what we're seeing in terms of their child's ability that they have demonstrated in school.
Right.
That's the hardest part, is like, sometimes we need you to actually put it on the paper.
But if I say, if I'm like, thank you very much for the feedback, but I want my child in grade up math, does the teacher say, well, I don't think that's a good idea?
But you're talking about two different things, because we were talking about the bottom box initially, which was getting into the advancement, into the advanced enrichments.
Yeah, I'm curious on the grade up math.
And then the grade up math is a separate, that's a separate-
But I'm asking, I'm asking the question for grade up math.
For grade up math.
If it's all circumstances, it's recommended to me as a parent, maybe your child is not ready for this, I'm like, thank you very much, but I want my child in it? Is the answer yes?
I can answer that. Yeah, that criteria and that framework is going to stay in place. So there is a criteria in which, if you're grading up or skipping a grade, where we are assessing and making sure that that would be appropriate, so we don't move into another grade level. I think the confusion was, we were in this part where we'd be talking about, like, an enrichment-type experience at the grade level that you're in, and we want to be a little bit looser with the requirements of that, because we're also looking for kids who are really interested in math, but maybe are not scoring in the, you know, ninety-eighth percent.
Can we just answer the question? Like, the question is if-
If the parent wants it, then they are going to get it. That's basically what I'm saying.
For, for, I know.
No, for this.
Math investigations.
The investigation.
For math investigations, the math acceleration. I get it, grade up math, the gatekeeper, as John says, should be based on, you know, what's best for the child, the assessment. But for these two things, math investigation, math acceleration, if I'm a parent, regardless of what feedback I got, I want my child to be, is the answer yes?
The answer is not that.
The, so it's, no. So the parent, the teacher is the gatekeeper. Can we just get to an answer?
So who makes the choice?
I'll answer.
Yeah, it's all we're asking.
I'll answer. And pardon me, I thought, I thought I did. For math acceleration, there is a criteria that you have to hit in order to do grade up. That's true now, and we're saying that will be true in the future.
We're talking about this, it's the blue box.
We're going, we're going one more.
He's asking about the two different areas.
Grade up, grade up, we get it, there's criteria. I'm talking about math acceleration, math investigation.
Advanced investigation.
And advanced math investigation and independent study.
That's my confusion, because I was hearing grade up.
We were using them interchangeably.
Fine, okay. We've done that a few times, and we're going to talk about not grade up.
Yes, correct.
Dark blue box.
Dark blue and then yellow, right?
The bottom one in the darker blue.
There's a yellow one.
No, there's not a criteria set right now that you would have to be in, like, the ninety-eighth percentile in order to participate in this. Where we will start is by coaching into that and being able to provide kids with very rich experiences, and that could be based on either they really are assessing and at a very high level, or they're showing a very high interest to do very challenging work.
And let's say that they're not, and the parent wants it, is the answer yes or no?
Are there scenarios that occurs, and you have to tell the parent no?
I don't think, this is new. This is brand new. So the question is, again-
Right, the question is, how is it?
Grade up is clear, you take an assessment, it's yes or no, that one done. With this, I think my concern would be, if I'm a parent, even if my kid is doing average or below, I'm going to be like, yeah, I want more, maybe that'll help them.
Yeah, correct.
What if, what if two-thirds of the class all say yes, or more than two-thirds all say yeah? How do we handle more than two-thirds of the class leaving to go to this enrichment activity? That's, and then, and then are we going to allow that because of the parents?
Pull out, remember? Right, that was my first step, that the answer to say this, who would support that classroom? So as described in classroom X, if you've got two-thirds of the folks who are wanting to head out and do something, what I think we would do is support that classroom in a push-in way, that would have a very focused mathematics element, both with the learning specialists, with the classroom teacher. I think what most typically happens is when students, and maybe it's helpful to describe what's going to occur in upper grades as a distinction between the secondary model. So when students enter some of these kinds of programs in elementary school, it's very fluid, they might be there for three weeks, they're out. They might be there for six weeks, they're out. It's not, like, being scheduled into Algebra I all school year long. So what our teachers will do is some pre and post-testing, maybe my geometry unit, I'm the highest flyer in all of fourth grade, I'm headed off, and I'm going to extension. Then we move into dividing with decimals, and I'm not so sure about that. Now I'm not any longer. It's about being responsive to the instructional need more than it's about, I'm in or I'm out. And so I think in our initial conversation, if I were the teacher with this parent saying, I want in, come on over, let's see what happens. And then going from there, what might happen in some occurrences like this, where there is a hard press from home, where the student may be less interested in that kind of approach, usually the next conversation is about someone who is tearful, who's upset, who is stressed, and then the conversation is oriented differently to continue to support that student.
So anyone could be, to his point, anyone can be in it if they want to?
That's not what I'm taking away.
I don't, I don't know what we're taking away. I'm confused.
I'm taking away that it's a highly individualized approach, but I guess under your scenario, I guess we don't know, because-
We don't know, we've never done it.
If they are going to, people aren't going to all be asking-
I'm just saying, we should probably have a process.
My question is, again, is it the teaching?
I don't know.
And are they using it for alternative individuals?
And let's say, to Paul's point, I want my child doing these things, but maybe they shouldn't be, and the teacher relays that information, but that doesn't mean anything to the parent, right? I mean, I'm not, I'm just saying, and so where's the support in that situation?
And then, to Michelle's point, everyone in the class wants to, I get it, you know?
And we don't, and the last thing, like, I'm all for-
Either you got to do it, because it's just going to be an all or nothing.
I'm all for, I think it's great for the parents to be involved in this and saying, you know what, yeah, I want my child, I think that's awesome. But we have a problem now of, at least to me, it feels like it could put a burden on the teacher, potentially to have to manage this kind of scenario, like, you're not, I don't think this is going to work for you, but the parent says, yes. Because any parent would want more math from my kid, right? I mean, most, I would say. So that becomes into a resource issue and a burden for a teacher to have to control, like-
I just, like, if we're going to put in things like this, I just think that we also have to put in the support, not just for the children, but for the adults, right? And we have all, a lot of coaches.
I was saying that it's probably something that's needed, so I'm going to speak to the positive side of this, because I have a fourth grader, right? So my son, he's completed math tests, you know, throughout the year, and certain areas in his math assignments, he gets nineties, but then sometimes he gets a seventy, or a sixty, or maybe even less, right? But there are some areas where he's stronger, and there's some areas where he needs a little more development. So what I'm hearing is, you're tapping into the areas where you say, oh, my goodness, you're strong here, let's pull you out so we can tap into that strength, and then you're staying in class so we can develop where we see you may need the additional attention. Is that what I'm hearing, how the steps kind of work for the pullout?
That's accurate. The only thing I would add is that even when I'm leaving the classroom for that area of strength, I'm still receiving my classroom strength. It's not instead of, but in addition to. And I wonder if it's helpful to underscore that this approach is in response to what has been a strong voice from the community. When students do not meet a grade up mark, now what? They've shown you that they're eighty percent proficient, let's say, in the grade level standards beyond. What happens now? Do I just go back to the grade level and bop through the work? And of course, our teachers are doing an amazing job at meeting those individualized needs as they can, and what they would let us know is that lens of a math specialist with an additional set of hands for units and areas or zones of time in the school year, where a student could use a bit more, a bit more math olympiad, a bit more, you know, time with peers across a cohort rather than just the twenty-five in my room. This approach is in response to that. Would that open up other challenges? We anticipate some.
Yeah, the intent phenomenal, hitting the mark, without a doubt. I have concerns about potential execution, like, what happens when it's time to do this? Do we have support? And how does the teacher manage expectations from a parent versus, you know, what their child?
And I think that's good feedback, and if we want to get to, like, a yes or no answer, does this currently have a criteria in here that is saying, yes, you can, no, you can? Answer to that is no, it is not written in here. Can we put that in here? Yes, we can put that in there. So the feedback that I took down is that, like, we can build out a criteria?
I don't think that's what we want, like, necessarily. I think we want to make sure that if we're doing this, that there are the proper supports in place to make sure that it runs smoothly, and it's just a suggestion for you to think about as you're working out this. Because I do hear teachers don't feel supported in certain areas. I don't know if this will be one of them, but when they're having these conversations with parents, they want the support to either be able to put all the students that want to be into it, into these things, like, for parents, or the support from administration to say, I'm sorry to Johnny, like, you know, Johnny's mom, Johnny's dad, like, he's, you know, getting everything he needs out of the classroom, when he shows an aptitude, like, we'll surely move him out, you know? We're moving on to, you know, shapes next week, like, if he's really good at shapes, we're going to move him, you know, into this program as well, but right now, he's benefiting classroom, the classroom, but I just want to make sure that you're thinking about supporting the classroom teachers in the fact that they're the ones that are the seeming gatekeepers here.
I mean, I'm not against the teacher, I mean, someone's going to have to manage this to Tara's point, right? Who wouldn't want, you know, math investigation, you know, if they can get it, right? So, and it can't be everybody, right? So there's going to have to be some, you know, initial, and I get it, in collaboration, but, you know, and, I mean, there's going to be some people that's like, regardless, I want, I want my student in math investigations, and we don't have the resources for everybody to do it.
And then two, classroom management, like, keeping, I've got eight students that are pulled out at the end of my instruction, just keep it in mind of how that also impacts, you know, the classroom during that time of exit for those students that do go and are pulled out. So there's some things, too, that we can also consider, too. But I think this is, at least to me, when I read it, I was like, wow, you know, you get to have this extra time to kind of, like, build the skills that you are strong in? So I thought this was a really good idea for our district.
No one, yeah, no one's debating whether or not this is amazing, that's right, to the point. It's the execution, and then, because we've seen it before, right? Why this person, you know, why Michelle's student, not mine, right? And just that is going to come up, and we probably should be thinking about a process on how we're going to deal with that.
I thought, when I saw this, it's just a little concern about gender bias, and women are girls and STEM, and they're not gaining support or saying you're not good at it without proper care and instruction and focus, because I know there is unconscious bias in teaching. So I was just wondering how that can be addressed.
Okay.
But I don't know if that can be.
I think that's one of the things that, in a conversation with our staff, even with our elementary ingenuity lab, and thinking about the way that engineering principles and making are coming into science and mathematics practices instructionally, that's another area that we see tapping into related to how we extend mathematics and science specifically. That has been right on the table with all of our teachers about how the classroom's lighting up from students that they might not expect, whether that be gender-related or whether that be related to someone who's real quiet and shy all year, doesn't have much to say. They get in that space, and they are surrounded by their students and telling them all about how things work.
Do we have stats on, just on that point, before I forget? We have stats on grade up?
I do.
Like, is it, is it-
Fifty-nine percent male, forty-one percent female.
So to, but to Trustee Noble's point, even the language that we, I read a study that, that someone said, sometimes the conversation and the questions that we ask, female students versus male students, also lead us to a path of decision. So even that guided conversation is going to be important, and so if you ask the male students, oh, you're great in math, you should do this, do you ask the female students, oh, you have a little struggles, but I know you're good, but you're struggling in some areas. So I think that conversation, that kind of guides them, is something that we also want to make sure that we are educating our folks on, as we're having those conversations with our students, to eliminate that bias. Thank you. I didn't even share that I read a study about that.
Sixth grade to twelfth grade.
So again, good, looking at this, but, no, well, I want to go do a quick overview, that's all right? So on page two, so taking students from the K-5 environment into the sixth-eight environment, this is, I think it's important to say, like, this is the vision board, this is where we are going, we have the vision that we want all students in tenth grade to be in Algebra II. That is our vision for every student, that is not the case now. So how do we, how do we get to that point?
Can you say that we're targeting all students in which grade?
Tenth grade, Algebra II.
Because the PSA, because the SAT is heavily focused.
SAT and PSAT, that, and also allows them to take the higher level of math if they so choose. So I say that as a vision, knowing that one hundred percent is, one hundred percent- So, I say that as a vision, knowing that one hundred percent is, one hundred percent is never one hundred percent, but the idea is this is our goal space. So now that we have put in envision math, we have, now have a common, a common curriculum that all of our students see. They are now going to enter into the new middle school selection, into the new middle school schedule, which allows for extended academic time in all of math. So looking at sixth grade, the majority of our students will fall into these two categories. There are always exceptions, and I will, I point towards like the left, the far left column that's not on here, and we can talk about those students another time, but they're gonna come into sixth grade, either doing sixth grade math, which will pull in some seventh grade content into there, or they're going to enter into what will be called pre-algebra, which is currently called seventh grade math. But as we have looked at our studies and historically, and basically in terms of strong math, the idea of pre-algebra, which is otherwise known as Math Seven, is the core foundational math that you need to be, to be successful of moving all the way up. So if you don't have strong foundational skills in those pre-algebraic concepts, then math becomes that area of difficulty going through. So it's extremely important that students have that class. So when we, we don't ever want a student to skip over the pre-algebra slash Math Seven course, so we're capturing where they are. So they come into sixth grade, they're either in sixth grade math, which is totally on target, great, outstanding, or they're going to be into our pre-algebra, what will become our pre-algebra class, with, is our seventh grade content, pulling in some eighth grade concepts into that class as well. Going into seventh grade is our next row there. There are times where you get on, put on a fast track, and all of a sudden, it's too fast. You, you are now in over your head, and so we want to make sure that we have, I refer to it today as we were talking about this with our high school principals, this is a math highway. So everyone's going in the same direction, but people are all in different lanes. So some of the lanes are going really fast, and some people are on the surface drive. They are going parallel, they're just going slightly slower, but they're ready to accelerate, they go on, and they get onto the freeway. They accelerate on, we want to make sure we have those on-ramps on. So here are some on-ramp areas, but also, sometimes you get in over your head, the cars are going too fast, the trucks are too big, you want to get off the freeway for a moment, you're still going the same direction, you exit off, and you go at a slightly smaller pla, slower pace until you're ready to get back out again. What we're having right now is an on-ramp. Then the off-ramp really was like a stop. There was no ease off to go into another area, or you, you could get on in fifth grade and that was it.
So what percentage of our ninth graders are on track to be in geometry for next year? Do you know that?
I'm sorry, what was that?
What percentage of our current ninth graders on track to be in college, oh, college algebra?
It's, it's pretty close. It's pretty close to fifty-fifty. Are you saying how many are completing high school algebra by the end of eighth grade and going into geometry?
Well, here, I have that. So, you're, you asked me for the grade that's not in my head, so I had to stop for a second. So our current eighth graders right now, sixty-two percent of them are in Algebra One, which will mean they'll be in, geometry is a ninth grader, and they'll be in Algebra Two as a tenth grader. Last year's eighth graders, so this year's current freshmen, forty-eight percent of them, sorry, let me get that right. Forty-six percent of them were in Algebra One as eighth graders, which means forty-six percent of them are in geometry right now, which means forty-six percent of them will be in Algebra Two as juniors.
Do you have the year before by chance?
No, Pat, no, Pat, of course I don't, because that would be the year that you would ask for. And I don't have that in front of me.
So we've gone from forty-six percent to sixty-two percent.
Sixty-two, not sixty.
And then that opens up senior year for a lot of.
Correct, and that goes back to Paul's conversation about, we eliminated, we are making it a family choice, informed choice about what they want to be in Algebra or not, versus being the gatekeepers to Algebra.
And then of that sixty-seven percent, how, what percentage of those students are considered proficient in those eighth graders that you just talked about, that are on track to be in?
Of our current eighth graders right now?
Yeah.
I, I don't have, I can't correlate that data in front of me, I didn't bring that data, and I was just saying, like, who was placed into it? That was our first, our first goal was to get, to remove the gate, right? To allow that in. Now, our second goal is this, this new schedule, which allows for extended time in the class, so that proficiency rate will increase. Because they'll have more time in the class, we'll be able to capture them, we'll be able to put in push-in supports. So much as Kimberly was talking about, the supports that they offer in those elementary rooms, with those extended blocks, those kids are no longer being pulled out of an elective, but rather they're receiving support in that math class itself versus in another space.
And how many minutes, how many minutes have we increased?
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight? Eighty-eight total?
Eighty-eight total, we're going from six, fifty-six, depending on the grade, fifty-six to sixty to eighty-eight.
And we'll make sure that all students get the pre-algebra that you're talking about at some, at some point.
At some point in middle school, yes. So most likely, seventh grade is the standard place it would land, but they will, they receive that. So then, so then you have those three blocks.
Yeah, without T U just.
Yes.
What is conception? Time?
No.
Do you mind if we get through that?
Sure, that would be fantastic, thank you. Does that make sure?
The eighty-eight minutes, is that per week increase?
Eighty, no, eighty-eight minutes per day in math, so that it is, yeah.
Clarification, it's a huge.
It's a huge increase per day.
Correct. We have some of the lowest instruction all the time in four areas.
Using Sarah's analogy of the highway, it's like adding on another lane to seventy-five, so that, and that's what's creating more accessibility, that we're widening out those lanes so that.
More people can go faster.
Yeah, so we can have more people accelerate through that.
Sorry, safely go faster. We're not gonna talk about ninety-six. We're gonna talk about the beautiful new I-75. So, in seventh grade then, you have your pre-algebra, which again, would be considered grade level, on grade level. I'm trying to do like, the furthest left is on grade level. And then those students who are in pre-algebra in sixth grade, they have two different, this could be the on-off ramp, right? Like, oh, boy, that went a little too fast for me, you know, you caught me at that. I, I love middle school, I was in, I got to be the principal in charge of the middle school last week, and I loved the idea that every day those kids present differently, every month, it's, it's an incredible time of change. And so this might be a chance to say, hey, like, you developmentally need to come into conceptual algebra, we are still putting you on that pace so that you can take your AP Calc if you want. There is not an off-ramp here. In terms of that, we're just making sure we get you where you need to be. And then the kids on the far right would go into Algebra One as seventh graders, that's high school Algebra One. So then the bottom row would be eighth grade. Again, we have our conceptual algebra, which is those Math Eights standards with some additional algebra put in there. Algebra One, which is the high school algebra. And then on the far right is what I would call, like, the express lane, if you want to go that way, in terms of using our, our highway analogy. Where those students would actually take advanced algebra, advanced geometry and Algebra Two standards. So when they enter into the high school, they would enter in at the pre-calc level.
So conceptual is kind of somewhere in between?
Conceptual is somewhere in between, it's, it's, it is the eighth grade's content, so the, the content that wasn't pulled down into seventh grade, but it also allows to have a little bit more conceptual understanding of algebra, a little bit more modeling, a little less formulaic idea, and then second semester, you jump more into that, so that you are really prepared to walk into Algebra One at the high school level. Yeah.
Algebra is not the high school level.
Yeah, they're preparing them for the high school level. So then, I appreciate Megan.
Just as one.
Yeah, you're good.
Yeah.
Great, so if you go into the next page, last page, this kind of takes that whole six-twelve highway analogy. I'm, I'm now going to apologize for that. Thank you, I appreciate that.
But going back to your page, students that fall into the eighth grade conceptual algebra, those are the ones that we would probably be looking at that will not make it.
No, they'll make it. I'll show you next page.
Okay, they could make it, but.
They could make it, yep.
They could.
They could, like, they, they, we're, we're still giving them the access and the opportunity to do that. So, so if our goal, yes, I, I hear what you're saying. Our goal is to give them access and opportunity to do that. It is their choice as to whether or not they want to. What we don't want to do is say, because of something that happened to you in seventh grade, you never get to take an AP class. We want to make sure we keep that avenue as open for as long as possible for them to take, if they choose to take, if they choose to make that stop on their journey.
So we have pull-out options for students that are excelling? Do we have pull-out options for students that may need additional support?
They will not be pulling out, they'll be pushing in. So in.
Exclamation.
So in the middle school level, with the eighty-eight minute block, your learning support specialists and your resource room teachers are not pulling kids into their spaces, they're actually pushing into those areas, or sitting right outside the room. The idea of the conceptual design of those classrooms is that the classroom extends into the hallway. So let's say the teacher says, they work, this is my learning specialist round here, Karen. We are working closely together, I say, today I'm going to do some direct instruction for the first thirty minutes, thirty-five minutes of the class, I could really use your help as I divide the kids up into different center-based things, for you to run the center with these certain students to work on this. So that support comes pushed in, versus that student then having to leave the room and go get support somewhere else. Some students may be more comfortable going to a room and getting support, and that is something that will be, I mean, these are middle school kids, it changes on a daily. That could be negotiated or not negotiated, but the idea is not, well, right now, if Karen is receiving support, she would be in Math Eights, and then instead of going to an elective, she would also then go to Math Support. We want that support to be on time, on delivery, in that space, so that student can experience success in that math course, but also then still get to go to all their electives, which is part of that whole child vision of.
So is, is that in the other document?
It's buried, it's, it's in the, on the document you're looking at, it's probably page eleven or page twelve. It's a really pretty graphic that the communications department helped us with, in terms of the phase-in model, but it's the MTSS. So when I talk support, I'm talking MTSS supports.
Okay.
And I think it's important to recognize, the MTSS supports are meeting students where they are, so it can be the students at the highest end or at the other end. The other thing, and I'm so glad you said this, Michelle, because it's my most exciting part about all of this, is that we are also embedding design into all the math classes, six through eight. So students will actually get an, an opportunity to explore mathematical concepts in an interdisciplinary way within that class, so they understand, this is, why am I learning this math? And what am I doing with this math? And this is how math is used in the real world. So sixth graders will be doing design and modeling, some then, seventh graders will be doing flights in space, and then eighth graders, not this year, but the year after, will be doing green architecture. So they're using their geometric concepts, they're using their algebraic concepts, and they're using their design and modeling concepts. So it's allowing students to play with math in a way that is holistic, but also embedded within the math program versus having them separated up. So I think some of the enrichments that we're looking at in the, in the dark blue box in the page before are now going to be actually embedded right into the courses, and that will be available to all students in all the math courses.
I think those are important points to, to highlight, for you, so thank you for sharing.
You're welcome, and I'm glad that you asked that question, because it prompted me to do that. So going on to the high school page, we start at the top, just showing you where the kids are. They are in eighth grade, they're in conceptual algebra, in ninth grade, they're in Algebra One, or in eighth grade, they're in Algebra One, or they're in the far lane, which is the accelerated geometry and Algebra Two. So this design is to show you the path that they can take. If you look down at the twelfth grade year, you can see where they can land in an AP or an Ivy course, every single student in every one of those paths, if they choose to go in that direction. The key, the reason why it's purple there is, you know, that black hot purple is like our goal, it's kind of like when you build a cathedral, you have to have a keystone that holds the whole thing together. Our keystone is the Algebra Two in tenth grade. Whether it's Redder Algebra Two or Honors Algebra Two, that is the keystone that allows us to have all these other paths for students to go to in terms of hitting those higher level courses if they choose to take them. Also, as always referencing, it, it happens prior to the PSAT and the SAT, which are those, the big ones that you want to make sure that you do well on for scholarships, for college acceptances, all those other really important things for students, but we feel that it's important to have that in place so you're in pre-calc or some sort of other calc course when you go to take those exams, actually in your junior year.
Do we currently offer differential equations?
Yes.
Yes, we do. Lawrence Tech comes in.
That's impressive.
So we have a professor from Lawrence Tech who teaches Calc Three and differential equations to our students. A small sampling at the moment.
Nice.
Small spattering, I think, at the moment of the students who come to do that. I have gone into that class more than once and have left.
Very confused.
Yep, yeah, there you go, thank you, thank you, Pat, yes, exactly, I've impressed, and also, impressed everything else. I think one of the interesting things that we were looking at in terms of our cohorts, in terms of looking at who has already graded up, and then our history towards grade up, and so that double acceleration, is there's about a cohort of twenty-two to twenty-five students in the last five years who fall into what would be, I would call on this row, the fi, the far right, the express lane. So what a nice cohort to have together, if we can keep them together, twenty-two, twenty-five, that's a nice class to keep going all the way through, which allows us to have those, those classes versus three or four, which is where we are at the moment.
So the carpool lane.
The carpool lane, there you go.
So I do have a question, so four of the university-level Calc Three and differential equations, are they receiving college credit for those courses?
They receive it from Lawrence Tech. And then Lawrence Tech works extremely hard to make sure that those credits are accepted by the universities that the students attend. So conveniently, the professor we, or he's the interim dean, at the moment that we looked at, happens to be married to a professor in the math department at U of M, and so that has helped, having that credit be accepted over there, so. I was excited to hear about that little piece, yeah.
We just met with math department at Lawrence Tech, and.
On Monday.
Yes, on Monday, thank you. And, yeah, just recently, they were able to get more of the transfer credits approved at U of M, and so that's always something that they're trying to maintain. So some of these pieces would be transferable to, to U of M, even if it's coming through Lawrence Tech.
Some of the feedback from colleges and universities when it comes to admissions, some of those difference makers are your math and language, right? How many students actually completed the full Ivy or an AP in the language, this small nationally? How many people have made it to AP Calc, A, B, E, B, C, or further nationally? It's smaller compared to some of the other APs that might be out there in social studies or in science, where there's a larger number? So getting further ahead in those two areas is proving to have dividends, plus all the research on math, as far as, you know, accelerating the math.
And I, and I want to make sure that when I was talking about the vision board, that was my joke earlier today as well, but keeping in mind that the, we're looking to make sure that all of this high school is ready for those eighth, next year's eighth graders. Because they're the ones who's gonna have the double amount of time in math. So we want to make sure as we receive them into the high school, we are prepared to keep them on that same pace that they're on. If they are driving the speed limit on I-75, we're gonna keep them at the speed limit. If they're driving above the speed limit, we want to make sure we keep them at that above the speed limit. Not that I endorse some speeding, but that, that analogy, I'm just gonna go with it all the way. So that idea is that we want to make sure when we, they come to the high school, that we don't slow them down at the high school, that we're keeping them on whatever pace that they are on, and if they need to be accelerated more, we have opportunities for that. We also, again, with the vision board at the high school, the one thing that is in place for next year is that we will be having AP pre-calc for students, so that is an opportunity for more students to take an AP course, specifically in mathematics. And also, it also is a good experience for them, if they are taking that as a junior, to know what they're, to expect when they are a senior in B C. It helps prepare them for that, so that they can do even better in that course as well. So it's a nice, sometimes you run right into B C Calc, and that's, you need to have a little, maybe, warning of what you're walking into, and it's a nice way to do that, but also for students where that is their senior experience, it gives them an AP course, math course to put on there and transcript. So lots of opportunities in that space. So we are super excited about what that means. In the bottom box, which is always our fun, apparently, the one that we all like to talk about, one of the things that we are also looking at, and this is just in the discovery phase of that, is the Michigan American Curriculum requires students to have a math experience in their fourth year. That can be classes that incorporate mathematics into it. So it could be a computer sci, AP computer science course, it could be a cybersecurity course, it could be a physics course. So the idea behind that is students get to explore mathematics in other disciplines, and a kind of mathematics in the real world type of experience. So we are starting to look at, as these kids start to come through, other ways that we can offer that fourth-year math experience to our students. You have to complete Algebra Two, that is a requirement, which is again, why we are looking to have that in tenth grade, because it gives them lots of space. But also, you know, if you're, if you're a senior and you're like, really? I, I have gotten through the Algebra Two, I have done everything you asked me to do, you know, is there any other way? I cannot have to be, or not not be, but try math in a different space, we can start looking at some of these classes. The reason why I won't say that they're approved at this point is we need to look through, at the mathematical content in all of those courses, but this was kind of a, a way to show some vision we have for that.
So I, I told, I can see back to Todd already on this, because I go back and look at like my path in school, it's always like, we reflect on it, it really was awful in senior, like, to have a gap, feeling like, I did, you know, AP Calc, whatever I've done, like, what do I do now? And it was kind of just filler time, where I didn't do anything.
Right.
This fourth box, or fourth year box, rather, there's a lot of good options in here. The other thing, and I don't know if L T U offers it, but something, I mentioned, like, discrete mathematics. So a lot of what, you know, as opposed to going completely to computer science, there's a lot with discrete math that deals with, dealing with probability and problem solving, which, for everything else that these kids might end up doing, becomes really relevant, because a lot of what's changing with, especially in computer sciences, it's, it's less about the raw AP computer science of understanding code, and more about the problem solving, and things like that will take. And things like that will take these kids to where they're entering fields where we're not. I mean, I'm seeing it happening every single day because I work in it, where it's not about learning how to write codes, learning how to solve problems. And you're taking AI and things like that and just analyzing and adapting, analyzing and adapting. And so things like that, where we may be able to give them that option, which would transition really well as they go into college. These are for, you know, for the kids that really know, hey, I'm going to go to engineering, I'm going to go to CS. Having an option like that where they meet everything they need to do and they jump right in and get something that's going to take them, or maybe they start working with something.
I appreciate the door that you just opened for me, which is that, that would be an amazing place to start putting in some CTE, so career and scholarship information, because they have some amazing discrete mathematics and engineering programs. We also offer Project Lead the Way, which in the engineering field, it's like you could do aerospace engineering as a senior in Project Lead the Way, which is an incredible application of mathematics. So those are the types of courses that we want to start to promote and place in those places. But also, I will say that some of the courses that they offer through CTE at Oakland Schools is absolutely amazing in terms of the application of mathematics in terms of their, their engineering program at that highest level there is just, it's, it's a freshman-level equivalent. So the idea of like to be better at promoting what those are in terms of that application piece, their robotics is also an outstanding program. So that's the type of avenue that we're going to start to really look at in terms of also promoting exactly what you just said, which is, yeah, you've done the AP, but sometimes AP can also be very formulaic. And so the idea is you don't know how to apply it when it comes to applications. So what, how can we balance those together? And so to another point that is outside of this realm, which is one of the things that we're going to start to do this summer for all of our high school students in the beginning of eighth grade is to start offering professional studies kind of like a one-sheeter. Like, oh, you're interested in engineering, are you aware of all the classes that we offer at Bloomfield Hills High School and also through Oakland Schools that will allow you to explore that, that pathway, that professional studies? But have them for, I think we have it right now at 10 different ones. And the idea being that you don't have to take all of these classes. This isn't like a pathway you get on and you can never get off, but more, here are some initial exploratory ones and here are some advanced studies courses. And that might make you realize, I really want to be an aerospace engineer versus a civil engineer. Wouldn't that be great to know to go to college before you go to college? Versus, I want to be an engineer, but I have no idea what that really means. So that's what we're trying to do is be, be a little bit more clear about the, the professional studies and the ways for you to really explore what it is that you're interested in and maybe understand what you, what you like and what you don't like before you go off to college.
So what had I asked for, too, Michelle?
So, um, so starting in sixth grade, so is it the grade up that causes them to be in this pre-algebra path?
Yes, the grade up can also happen from fifth grade into sixth grade. So when I look at our grade up data, usually it's a smattering. Like a handful or less are in second, third, fourth, fifth, and then all of a sudden jumped up to 25 to 40, depending upon the grade that's coming through that goes up into the sixth grade space.
So it, so it is, it is an assessment base to determine initially what path they're going on in sixth grade throughout? And is there a way, once they start out at sixth grade math, not this pre-algebra, through maybe a, maybe a summer school course where they can go into that path? Or once, once they're in, you know.
You mean fifth grade going into sixth grade?
Yeah, so I, so I see six through 12, right? So it would be grade up where they would start in this pre-algebra path.
Sure.
Right? So what, sixth grade math path, let's just say, for whatever reason, they weren't grade updated and test assessment, through summer courses or other things, how can that student get to the pre-algebra lane and go through and, and end up on that path, right? So.
So we're exploring the summer options. And I just want to make sure that I, I'm clear when the class that we, that we want every single student to take at middle school level is that pre-algebra class. You're not, I know you're not asking to jump over that, but we would not offer pre-algebra as a summer class because, because the content of that class is so important and making sure that that is, that is the foundation for the rest of your mathematics. So we are, we are exploring ways to look at fifth grade into sixth grade to get into that place, but we would never do it in place of pre-algebra.
So who, so you're saying every student can start out in pre-algebra?
No, I'm saying every student has to have pre-algebra at the middle school level.
At the middle school level? But I'm just saying if a student, for whatever reason, tutoring, whatever, late bloomer, you know, is somehow because of not grade up in the sixth grade math and on this path, right? That they don't want to, you know, like, oh, I want to accelerate, I want to be an engineer. How do they get on that path?
Well, that's what I just said. We will, we're going to, we're exploring options between fifth to sixth grade at that. But, but I wanted to make sure when I was saying that we're looking at that in terms of the sixth grade math. We are not going to offer opportunities to jump over pre-algebra.
So after seventh grade, you decide as a parent, I want my child to go to Algebra I regardless.
Correct.
They, you would have that opportunity, and then you would meet with the teacher, what are some things I need to work with my child over the summer? I want my child to be in Algebra I next year. That puts in the sequence in Algebra I, eighth grade instead of ninth grade, geometry sophomore year, Al, sorry, freshman year, Algebra II sophomore year. And from there, they can branch off and pick other classes. So everyone has that option.
Everyone has that option, but what if the late bloomer wants to be, wants to get into, start, starting in eighth grade, honors geometry, wants to go that path?
Eighth grade or sixth, sixth grade? I mean, I thought you said, I thought you said fifth grade going into sixth.
No, but I'm saying fifth grade, I'm saying they want to eventually get to the high school, without a grade up. They want to eventually get to the high school path of honors algebra, algebra, you know, the far-left lane, whatever we want to call it, is a, is real advanced path.
Then they would take Algebra in eighth grade. That puts them already a grade ahead. We have some students that are three and four years ahead already. But if you're talking about getting at least one full year ahead, eighth grade, every student has the opportunity regardless to select Algebra I.
To be in the middle, the middle lane in high school. I'm saying is there accelerated things they could do in the summertime to, to try to get in the far, you know, in this.
What I would recommend to a parent.
Accelerated.
Geometry slash Algebra II.
Yeah, they're a late bloomer, you know, I want to be, I want, I want to, I want to in 11th grade take AP Calc, you know, I want to be on that path.
So you want to move even further is what you're saying?
You want to.
So my recommendation to that parent would be, take the PSAT eight score. In order to summer, put all the information in the Khan Academy and use that to work to try to make additional progress.
So, yeah, this summer, try to, summer, try to.
That's what I recommend to that parent.
We do have a test out process right now for algebra.
We have a placement.
Yeah, we have a placement.
To cure from nothing, like it's a placement, diagnostic and a placement for algebra and geometry as well. And in fact, I just went over those parameters today with the high school. So, so there, again, back to your, your comment about there, there is going to be an on-ramp between fifth and sixth grade. So your child is, in fifth grade, they've been enjoying the math activities, the math enrichment. They, they have demonstrated like a real love for it. There's going to be an opportunity that summer to get out of, to move to the pre-algebra lane. But that, you know, so, so again, this is the vision board to get everyone where it is. I think what we're going to start to see as, as our kids go through these middle school years and then go into the high school, having had at that point, I haven't done the math in terms of, I think it's 100 additional hours, the exposure to mathematics per year is a 300 additional hours. I might be wrong on that, I'll check that, my math when I'm done. Going into high school, then that means all of this in high school will really open up quite a bit. So like, so that middle path where the purple box is, I would anticipate 80 to 85% of our students landing there within the next four to five years as they go through the middle school program.
Paul, in order to accelerate again, because the hardest classes to jump over are that seventh grade pre-algebra, algebra, and Algebra II. But there might be an opportunity that if we did move something in the summer, a geometry would be more successful taking that in the summer. So there might be a possibility, if we offered something like that, that that would put you at still taking algebra in eighth grade. Because we wouldn't want you to push past that because we're really going to invest in that 80-minute block to make sure we have a solid foundation of algebra. And then possibly between that eighth and ninth grade year, might be able to take geometry during the summer so that you're ready for Algebra II as you enter into ninth grade. So there might be an option to do that, but geometry might be the most successful way to.
I mean, I get 80% or a good percent going to be in that purple block. I'm just saying.
Compared to 62%, no.
60, yeah, I'm just saying if, if someone wants to self-accelerate over the summer, whether it's Khan Academy or whatever, and try to get in the real accelerated block, you know, because whatever happened in elementary school didn't happen in, you know, middle school, do they have opportunities to try to do that?
I think we could take a, take a look at that.
The answer would always be yes, but I think, I'm not going to say that, like that would be on a case-by-case look at what you have, right?
You could test out.
Okay, we're not, we're not calling it a test out, we're calling it diagnostic emplacement. Because what's happening is students are coming to us and they're saying, I got, I got 50%. Well, we would like to tell you the 50% that you were, that you knew, so you know what 50% to work on. So we're calling a diagnostic emplacement for credit, emplacement, Mr. Watson. I want to correct myself. I said 300 hours of additional math instruction. Based upon some quick math over here, it's around 252 hours of additional math instruction in the middle school level that we are anticipating. That includes the embedded design that we are anticipating will show some very different. Those students coming through will have some incredible opportunities mathematically and otherwise at the high school as they come through. One of the things we are also talking about today with the high school team is keeping in mind that chemistry and physics have, are so reliant on math that our students will come in with stronger math skills into those classrooms as well, which will also change the curriculum in those areas. It's not just about that. We are talking math today, but the same ideas, we're adding the same number, 252 hours of instruction to our English Language Arts Program in the middle school level as well. That's going to also reap benefits in both the English, but also in your history classes and in your humanities types of classes when they get to the high school. So we're excited to see those kids as they come through to us.
So are you saying you're going to give us the same report for reading?
Something similar, yes, to English language. We, we're picking a subject at a time because I think otherwise it gets really overwhelming. And we've already been talking about this for, I don't even touch on long.
I do want to point out the, the chart that has the progress, progression to 25.
Oh, okay, right. The phase in chart on your, on your, yep.
So we will, you will continue to give us an update like on the pilots as well as eighth grades next year, how they're doing?
Absolutely, absolutely. And I think that one of the questions I'm sure it is, okay, we've talked a little bit about middle school, what are we doing for our high school students currently? So I think part of the reason in that report, we put in all those course descriptions in the, in the back. I think that it's important to recognize that we have added that pre-calculus course, AP pre-calculus course for all students. But we also have built-in support within the student schedule for Algebra II extension, pre-calculus extension, and calculus extension. Students take that class alongside the math class. So they actually have doubled down on their math in terms of, they have their direct instruction from their calculus teacher, and then they go to their extension teacher, sometimes it's the same teacher, sometimes not, to actually really understand those concepts and make sure that they have it strong. That's the joy of having an eight-period schedule, is that there is space in there to, to do built-in supports. Also, with the lack, or with the choice to go into Algebra I, we also eliminated, you can't, we used to, there used to be some sort of thing that you had to get in eighth grade algebra, you had to get a 75 or better, I don't remember what the score was, to be able to move on to geometry. If not, you had to repeat Algebra I as a ninth grader. We've removed that barrier and just said, you saw your score, you know your grade, you have the option to repeat Algebra I in his ninth grade. There's no penalty to you because your transcript does not reflect what you took in eighth grade. It only reflects what you actually took physically at the high school. So some students who didn't do as great in eighth grade, you took the risk, you tried it, wasn't great, but now, boy, you are really ready to take that ninth grade algebra on a GPA that matters to colleges. But we have other students who are like, no, I'm ready for geometry, I'm done with algebra. Like, I don't want to be in this anymore, jump into geometry. But now, all of a sudden, looming in front of them is Algebra II. So what we have put in place is an Algebra II preparation course. So for students who are currently in geometry, they can take a one semester course that we, that goes over those initial Algebra I concepts, but also prepares them for the Algebra II concepts that they're about to see so that they will walk in there with confidence into the Algebra II class as a 10th grader.
So when were these conversations, going back to the K-5 model, when were these conversations had, we had with parents about these, this, and their child?
I believe that as, as we roll out that program, again, this is the vision board. So you're asking for a couple, a couple of the.
Just thinking about like what's next, right? So whether family's going to start to hear about this, this is going to be when you show up to open house in the fall? Or is this something that like is going to happen throughout the year?
Is this in 2023 or 2024?
Four elementary will be pushing into this model throughout the year.
23, right?
Yes, yeah. But it won't necessarily be on September 8th or 9th. Sorry, I'm not sure which one of those is the first day of school. But we'll be pushing that into in the months of September and October. So we'll be preparing for that and then start, start some of those pieces up that don't currently exist right now. So we'll have that, you know, we'll, we'll move into that in the fall. And then from there, we'll have that ongoing. So we'll be able to figure that out. But the first thing is just getting all of our K-5 in the building. There's going to be a lot of cultural pieces, like that, that will likely be the primary focus right off the bat for next school year. And then as that starts to wane, then we'll move into some of these pieces here.
So the K through five, let's just say winter, right, fall, winter. And then the six through 12 model, is that 2023 vision or 2024?
Yeah, we'll, we're going to do some of that curriculum work over the summer so that sixth and seventh grade, as well as some of those algebra components that we've already built those, because we're going to have that block of time available to us next year right off the bat, starting in September. So we'll start doing some of that pacing work and realignment of standards throughout the summer so that we have that ready to go.
And the embedded design will, will start next year.
So 2023?
It's almost done two years ago. The piece about getting more students in eighth grade into Algebra I, that was done two years ago. And Sarah said, I believe 62% of.
62% of all students in eighth grade currently are in Algebra I. And last year it was 46%. And the year before, that was actually the lower.
So the six through 12 path, right, will be defined, you're saying, in 2023?
And a lot of pieces already are, you know, there's additions, you know, as Sarah talked about, AP pre-calc is an additional option. But Difficult Q, Calc III, there's one student I spoke with was taking linear algebra as far as dual enrollment, some, which is a very high-level course. Some of those other pieces are already there.
So we'll just get an update of this sometime during the summer?
Yep.
I was kind of curious whether as some student is put into honors algebra or honors pre-calc or AP calc or something like that, and then doesn't fully do well, and what do you do with that student? You know, who's, who you thought would excel and then.
So there, I think on that sheet, I'm sorry, I switched over to the elementary one. There's the math elective sheet. So there's a box that says math electives. That is probably a place that they would go towards after that.
Oh, I got you.
So AP pre-calc will have, we do have a pre-calc extension. So sometimes if you're having a, it's a little, your, your first semester is a little rough, we might strongly suggest that you take the extension course for the second semester, which sometimes is often how that happens. And/or vice versa, students sometimes take it for a full year in the extensions, and sometimes they take it just for a semester when they're just trying to get their feet under them. And then they, I think, I think some of the names scare us, right? Calculus is a scary name. So it, so they take on the extension as a support, and then they realize they do or don't need it. And so then they change at the semester break in terms of that class. So those, again, talking about the on and off ramps, those are little ones that are like built into the schedule as well. Additionally, we do have after-school tutoring, those types of things. But let's say a student in junior year takes pre-calc and they're like, nope. I had a daughter who was taking pre-calc. One of the textbooks said pre-calc with limits and one said pre-calc without limits. And she was in the pre-calc without limits, and she went in and she'd swished out of that pre-calc into the other one, and she's like, I think I found my limit. Like, I, that was great, I thought she might, she had a little bit of sense of humor about it.
There you go.
But it, but that, that's the thing, is like, again, you, we all hit a capacity point at some point. And so if you take AP pre-calc as a junior and you're like, yeah, I do not want to go into this calc thing, there are a bunch of other things that you can take, including when we start to expand that fourth-year math elective, what that looks like. Then maybe you would jump into, you know what, I really like to get cybersecurity, that's much more my vein, you know, where I am. And then that would count as your math credit because you've already gotten through Algebra II.
Very rich conversation.
This is really comprehensive.
This is really good.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you, Megan, for this question. No.
Thank you, Megan, for trying to keep it honest. One more thing.
Okay, so we're going to move on, thank you, into item 3H, K-12 Mathematic Highways. Oh.
Yep, we just read.
All about our highways. See, now you heard it.
I hear education center, God, history and program.
One more time on the highways?
Expedientures.
Thank you. So this whole grant share is powerful. Thank you, so this whole grant share, powerful regarding some of the histories, sorry, some of the history of the center-based program and funding. Questions about the history of the center-based funding, center-based program and its funding?
My question more specifically, I think this is something I brought up, is I noticed in the budget that we went through that it was a $400,000 more or less transfer from the Center Fund into the General Fund to pay for special education fee, special education lawyer fees. I know I've been asking for years about what our expenditure was on, on lawyer fees. And, and I would assume that anytime that we would, you know, that significant, that we would transfer money from the Center Fund to the General Fund or transfer money out. And to the reason why that if before it was done, it would come to the board for discussion as to whether or not, you know, what is the reasoning? Why are we doing it? I know in the past we've used it to pay for like special educate, for buses for special education, that would make sense. This one, I'm just a little confused upon.
Yeah, so the history on the back I thought was interesting, going back years. And you can see, starting all the way back as far as 2016, there's $1.00 million that was taken out for construction costs at the new high school. There's been other transfers, 381,000 for math curriculum in 2020.
Not asking about the history, I'm asking about this particular expenditure transfer and why it wasn't, why, why it didn't come to the board for us to discuss, you know, taking $400,000 out from the Center Fund to pay for special education legal fees, you know, and.
Yeah, I don't have a direct answer for that.
That was the question I asked four different times, so.
So I can provide a bit of background to this. The special education legal fees, just to, for background for everyone that might not be aware of special education funding in totality. Special education funding has been part of the National Financial Research Collaborative. We understand as a state and even at the National School Board Association in Washington, special education is underfunded. In our General Fund, there's been a running history that we've provided to the NSBA for our board members that have gone to participate to be aware of that underfunding. That underfunding on average for Bloomfield Hills Schools in our General Fund is anywhere from three and a half to $4 million a year. Special education costs are funded at approximately 73% to 75% of the actual cost. So we are experiencing, you know, a significant hit. Included within those special education costs are legal fees. And legal fees, the amount that was in that transfer was from 2015 through 2022, which was the implementation of the period within our new system. And they are direct legal fees from when Jen or one of the special education administrators may need to reach out to an attorney for assistance and other, and other inquiries. In addition to that, there was an agreement that we reached a couple of years ago that Special Ed reached with an attorney and a mediator, where nowhere in the state of Michigan could services be provided to one of our resident special education students. Through the mediation agreement, I'm going to be very careful with FERPA here. It was agreed, a resource was found and that was paid for. We tagged that mediation agreement within the legal fees. So that was part of that 300, I think it was like 78,000 or 387,000 dollars. In terms of where this came from, this was when the fall count showed the decline and budget balancing actions were being discussed. I'm not throwing Tina under the bus, but this was an item that she had asked me to put into the mid-year budget to transfer that, some of that reserve to cover those special education past legal costs, including that mediation up through 2022. And to include annually the transfer for the special education legal fees, because they are not funded and it's underfunded. And in our General Fund, it's underfunded. I put together in this PowerPoint presentation how the PA 18 funding works. Because it's important to note, the PA 18 funding is a millage that is collected through Oakland Schools and it is passed out to the districts based on all of your special education costs that are reported. For Bloomfield Hills, based on this current year's allocation, in totality, there's over $20 million worth of special education added costs. That's the base of it. So we're entitled to 4.5 or 4.6 of that allocation. For the year that's in, referenced in the sheet with the yellow highlight, I think it's slide three, it shows how that spread is. The PA 18 tuition that funds center programs comes immediately off the top of that. The, the center program funding model includes a 7% contingency. So what that means is in November in the fall, when the tuition is developed, you automatically build in 7% for the unknowns. And that tuition base for each one of those students includes that 7% for the unknowns. That's how that fund balance has built up. If that 7% hadn't been included, that revenue would have come to the General Fund. And another way that I would like to just kind of relate and give an example is imagine at mid-year within our General Fund, we provide a budget to the state of Michigan. And we say, here's all of our known staff and here's all of our current vacancies. And this is what we believe our total budget needs to be. And the state says, great, add 7% to that. And as long as your reserves don't increase by more than 7%, we will give you every dollar and you get to keep it. But if your reserves go up greater than 7%, you have to give it back. That's how this model is, is created.
All right, so again, thank you for that explanation. So again, I'm looking at it, if, if we're saying, fine, they're, they're, you know, they have reserves. And I look at special education legal fees outside of your one specific example is used for mediation. And at times wins, and I, and I've sat through with John and, and other board members, you know, community members, where community members of students that have IEPs think they're entitled to X. And maybe because of resource constraints, you know, we, we can't provide, so it ends up being, it ends up goes to mediation. If we said we're transferring $400,000, which never came to the board anyway, to pay for additional services for our students who have IEPs or special needs, fine. This is to pay for legal services, you know, for our special education, you know, director for mediation services. And at times is to prevent sometimes because of circumstances, you know, our special education students. So I, I don't think this transfer for those type of services is something personally I, I think should, should happen. If there's other, if there's needs of special, special needs students throughout our district, when you went into the history of how we're underfunded for special education, where we could transfer money from the special fund to help, I'd be all for it. To pay for legal fees for our special education department by this, personally, I, I don't, I don't think that, that, that is a viable transfer from the, from this, from the Center Fund. And, you know, and I just went to, to their, you know, I mean, if, if there's overfunding there that they can use for those students, then use it for those students. Throw them a party every day. I mean, I, 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 I actually, I, I don't think it's acceptable to transfer money out of that fund to use for legal fees, special education legal fees, unless it's helping, unless you can give me a, a breakdown of all those fees and all that helped our students of special needs in the General Fund.
So what I'm hearing you say is that future conversations about funds.
Well, I don't know if this, has this been posted?
No, it was, it was part of the mid-year budget that the presentation for mid-year had that included. And then at the committee of the whole, and then it was voted on then on the May 23rd, when the whole budget was presented. So it was inclusive, we did not post anything, it is just in the budget. If it is the flavor of the board that you would like that removed, that's fine. I can remove it out for final budget, which we're, you know, I'm in the process of. I just, you know, I do think, and I, I hear you, Paul, in terms of the legal fees, knowing that the General Fund has already been underfunded by three and a half to $4 million a year on average for our special education student related needs, which would include, one of the components are those special education legal costs. This was just a correlation to say, might this be a budget balancing action item? I believe it was discussed and I know that I had the email from Tina saying to do this. But if it's the flavor of the board and this is something that you feel that you're not in support of, perhaps we remove it. Maybe you would consider the mediation costs for the one student that was serviced outside of the state of Michigan, because there wasn't any program within the state that could accommodate that student's needs. Perhaps we consider to retain that one, that would have been in lieu of paying a center program tuition.
I, I, you know, in that situation, I agree with that situation. It's to help a student. If the other legal fees are not, you know, are, I mean, you can argue, if someone could prove to me that those legal fees helped students, then fine. The ones that were just mediation because we didn't have resources, whatever, and it didn't directly help student, you know, students of special needs. You know, my personal, not, you know, I mean, the flavor of the, you know, my colleagues can speak, would be the refs go back. Or, you know, I mean, I'm for transferring money as long as it's directly to help, you know, students of special needs. I, I can make that argument, you know, in the General Fund. And I don't think legal fees are, except for maybe one or two exceptions.
Do you have to know roughly the amount of the out-of-state agreement?
I believe it was like 141,000 or 150,000 of that. Our standard legal fees, just for when Jen or Rebecca or Trevor need to reach out for support or assistance or ask a legal question, I believe that those equate to maybe 20 to $25,000 on average for the year.
It wasn't 10 years?
I was going to say, what was the period?
I thought it was a 10-year period.
We went from, this started with the implementation of the new system. So it began 2015, fiscal year 2015 through fiscal year 22.
About 120 to 150 was for the alternative program out-of-state for a student.
120 of the.
120 to 150,000.
That was the legal fees or that was the?
That was the cost of tuition. The cost of that tuition.
So that's not legal, so that's not legal fees?
It was the cost of the agreement that we arrived at to meet the specialized needs of a student with a program that was not available anywhere within the state of Michigan.
Is that legal fees or is that?
We put it and tied it to legal fees to separate it because it was a mediation agreement that was reached between the district administration, a mediator and the family to find an appropriate educational setting for that particular student.
But the fees included the tuition costs?
Well, it was the cost of that program. It wasn't anything for legal related to that.
That's what I.
Right, it was the cost of that program, right.
So you threw it in, in the line item legal fees?
Because I wanted to keep it within our general ledger, separate and distinct, because it was a time-sensitive agreement. I didn't want to embed it anywhere. And to, it was something that, because it's out-of-state, it wasn't tuition, it wasn't mediation agreement. And so that's where this was tied to a separate account, because I knew it was going to pop in. It had, it had a set dollar amount associated with it.
If this helped that student, fine, but everything else, unless you can prove, again, my personal opinion, prove to me that it helps students, then my rec, my personal recommendation would be it goes back into the Center Fund.
Well, it hasn't been posted out, so it'd just be a budget, right, it'd just be a budget.
So you're right, it hasn't been.
A budget change, so I will leave this to the direction of the board.
So discussion?
I guess what's been past practice with legal fees related to, to the center?
Well, it's, it's not legal fees related to the center, special education legal fees have always been paid for out of the General Fund. This was brought up as a budget balancing action item when we had the student loss this last fall as a suggestion that it is an unfunded special education related cost.
So to answer your question, from my history, at least the last eight years, this is the first time I've ever seen this trend, you know, a transfer. The only time, the only other transfer that I remember came to the board for our discussion approval was we wanted to get buses, special, you know, special education buses out of the Center Fund. It's, it's, so I've never seen, and in the past, legal fees have always, like special education legal fees always came from the General Fund. Never has it been, this would be a precedent, transferring money from the Center Fund to pay for it.
So you said 2015?
So our, our new software was implemented fiscal year 2015, so the, that would be the fiscal year that ended June 30th of 2015 through costs through June 30th of 2022. So it was inclusive of those legal fees in the mediation agreement.
And why did we wait, why are we waiting, why are we going through a period of seven years now to pay legal fees?
So it was to transfer that cost back based on the reduced student count in the fall and the budgetary impacts. And when everyone at cabinet was asked to look at what might we do to balance the budget because of the loss of students that exceeded the projection for the student count this past fall.
So.
So it's been paid, it's already.
So we, so we paid all these fees, now we're, now we're playing some budget games to get money.
At the end of the day, the General Fund pays three to $4 million more than what we get in Special Ed funding.
No, so what I'm envisioning is we paid all these legal fees, like what can we do? Well, we have all this money in the General Fund and their special education legal fees have been paid the last seven years. So why don't we just use this as one, it seems like a creative way. I, I don't know, I don't, I don't, it just doesn't sit right with me, I'm just saying right now.
Well, it sounds like special education is underfunded across the board at the state of Michigan, is that right?
That is, that is changing right now.
That's not what I'm saying, I'm saying this is like, we paid legal fees for the last seven years, special education legal fees. So the Center Fund is in theory special education, so why can't we just take these fees, transfer money and call? The, the fees have been paid. I mean, so why can't we just, why not just a current year? I mean, why the last seven, why not the last 20 years? Why not 30 years?
Or what some other districts do is they keep the amount they need in fund balance and then transfer all the center funds to the General Fund.
Most center operators.
That is more common in the state of Michigan.
Because the general funds are, General Fund is underfunded at that three and a half to $4 million. So peer center operators will transfer everything that is over and above that 7% directly back to their General Fund. We as a district have never done that. We as a district have approved transfers for specific things, the prep program renovations, the math curriculum. $1.9 million for the high school for. Yeah, for the construction with the new construction. There, I mean, it's listed on that last slide, the variety of things, two, special education vans for prep. So it just.
Well, the vans for prep, I would agree. I mean, if, if it's connected to, to Carolyn's point, if it's connected to impacting special education students in the General Fund because of the underfunding, I don't think legal fees the last seven years in mediation, outside of maybe this one example, impacts that. If, if, if we need to hire 30 additional resource teachers to help IEP, you know, fine, but I don't, I don't see the connection. I see this as creative accounting.
David?
Just, I would, I would caution the board to make a hard thing around Special Ed. So for example, in my time here, we've used the Center Funds to, we launched our Wonder World Project with technology across the entire district that provided all of these devices that came from the Center Fund. During COVID, we used the Center Fund to buy devices, to expand devices for COVID. Now we got those back from Essers, we will be able to refund that. In addition, when we do technology at Wing Lake, for example, we need to use that Center Fund to refresh. So in the bond program, Wing Lake, there, there are Center Fund, counting Center Fund, there is not monies in the bond for that. That will come from Center Fund to refresh the technologies. So you, you need to think about that Center Fund differently than just Special Ed. The Center Fund contingency, as Karen had mentioned, around general, General Fund and so on.
What is the spirit of the money that comes in for the Center Fund? It's to be used for the Center Fund?
No.
Oh, so it's to.
It is tuition base that includes a 7% markup in the pricing for special education costs based on that program. If you look at the special education tuition development, just as a resource on slide five. The special education cost for an SCI student at Wing Lake, the cost per student is $63,820. We have 38 students and I believe five of those are from Bloomfield Hills residents. The PA 18 funding that is going into the center program fund for those students is $42,421 per student. If we go down through all three of them, DHH, the tuition for a DHH student, we have $94,909 per DHH student, of which $65,705 is the PA 18 funding. If the tuition was not at this level in a center program, that money would have been in the General Fund. And if that tuition includes all these vacant positions in this markup and all these added things for this to, and as long as you don't go over a 7% reserve, you get to keep it, that's what created that fund balance. That's what created that fund balance. In the meantime, the general fund for our special education services is paying out over and above all the sources for special education, three and a half to four million dollars a year.
So, so again, if it's, my position, if it impacts students that need it because we're short $3 million, all means, I don't look at legal fees for the last seven years as impacting students. I actually think it on, on the reverse, outside of maybe this one instance where we're using it at times because we can't provide the services, so we have to go to mediation because we don't have the resources. So I'd rather that money go to pay for some of these things that our family members across the committee are asking for.
So, so the mediation was between special education and a family?
Correct.
So I think it's still dollars provided toward...
It was, it was like 140, I could get the exact number.
It was tuition, right? The majority of that...
Well, no, it wasn't, it wasn't tuition to a program. It was to meet the needs of that student at, it had to be, the student had advanced needs that could not be met anywhere within the state of Michigan, and it required a residential setting. And that total fee was broken down and agreed upon within mediation. So the parents paid a portion of it, we paid a portion of it. Our portion was equated to the 140 or 150 grand.
Right. I mean, that's fine, but the rest of it, I mean, that impacts a student that needed it and the rest, and the rest of it. Unless proved to me otherwise, I don't think it does.
And I hear your, you know, Paul, I hear you on the special education, but on that fund balance and how we have used it in the past, I listed the dates that the board had approved those motions. And it has been to the discretion of the board, and it's not always used for special education-related purpose. We have used it for the high school construction. We have used it for the math curriculum. It wasn't math curriculum for just special education, it was math curriculum. And so the board has looked at it in the past, the prior boards, as to what are the needs and what are the resources, understanding the underfunding of special education just in the general fund, which then reduced the resources of the fund balance in the general fund. If we had transferred those fund balances, that PA-18 money, over into the general fund, our general fund would have had greater resources available to be used for any needs. The PA-18 funding is not restricted to be used just for special education expenses. That's a different way to say it.
So the question is for the board, where's your comfort level? Are you more comfortable saying, you know what, keep it all in the center fund? We're, we're comfortable there. Or is your comfort level, you know what, for the student that required out-of-state placement, go ahead and make that transfer, keep everything else in the center fund? Or based on the transfer, potential transfer as it is, go ahead and make that transfer? So that's the feedback we're looking from each one of you. We're happy to go in any one of the three directions regardless.
The, the question I do have, right, you know, and you talk about things happen in the past, but still, this is seven years of legal, or 2015 today, seven years of legal fees, you know, that we're, we're doing some creative, you know, accounting. This is not like a question to the board, you know, this year we had 70,000 of legal fees for this, that, and the other thing to, you know, to, to, to balance the budget. Do you, as a board, are you comfortable with us trend? This is like seven years ago, legal fees, they're all paid. You know, take the money, you know, what, I mean, maybe this is, I'm sure there's needs throughout the district from, you know, kids with IEPs or special education. Take the, the balance of 280,000 and use it for that. For some of these students that are going to mediation, you know, that we can't provide these services because we don't have the resources. I'm not comfortable with what we're trying to do in this instance, regardless of precedent.
Okay. So, trustee Noble?
Well, with everything that I've heard and everything that I know currently in this moment, I feel comfortable the way you've allocated the funds to pay for mediation services because those services are required. From what I've understood, the PA-18 funding can be used for other issues. And that, is it true that you need lower than 7% in that fund to not...
It has to be 7%, you can't, you, you cannot have an increase in your fund balance greater than 7% on that annual basis. So for years and years and years and years, it's increased. And we've held off on it. If you looked at any of the other center operators, such as Lake Orion or Hazel Park, you would see that their center program reserves are either right at that 7%. And I think Lake Orion is actually below right now because they just implemented and there was apparently some issue.
Why, why is it increasing that trajectory?
Because the budget model for the PA-18 funding that creates that tuition model incorporates and beds into it a 7% contingency. For, gee, we just don't know. So you can list any vacant position, you, and then everything else has 7% up on top of it. So it's a very robust model. And the only time that a district or a center operator would be required to send money back to the county is if that annual audit shouldn't increase greater than 7%. Other than that, that funding stays there and the districts can transfer, most of them just transfer it directly to their general fund.
Without earmarking it?
Correct.
For any...
Because the PA-18...
Make them the loss that you're going to take.
Why do we, you, America, in this particular show?
Because we've, we've looked at that as we want to acknowledge how we're spending it. And we've gone to the board in the past to say, this is how we're, you know, like the 1.9 million for the high school, and it was a board motion to approve it. This particular, I'm not quite sure how with the transition from when I received the memo to say put it in mid-year, perhaps with just the, the notice of, you know, her resignation, you know, whatever, it just did not make it in a formal discussion to the board. It was listed as in the PowerPoint for the mid-year budget that, you know, I put out on, I think it was February 20, March 9th, and then it was finally approved with the full resolution on March 23rd.
Could it, could it have stated on the mid-year, just a $400,000 transfer because we know we're three to four million dollars?
Correct. It could have...
It could have been a 1.5 million dollar transfer.
That could have been the description.
To offset the supply costs of the general fund.
Correct. We've just always tied it to something, but we don't, don't have to.
Which is not, which is not necessarily counterpractable.
Correct.
Correct.
I mean, if, if there is, I mean, I'm glad we were transparent. I mean, one point, if we were going to transfer 1.5 million, again, I hear over and over times that we don't have the resources to provide the needs for, for, for our special education students, you know, that are not in the center program. I wish it could be earmarked specifically for them as opposed to just 1.5 million, then, you know, that, from the general fund just to pay for costs. And maybe there's things that, you know, we need to take a look at hard that we need to cut, you know, you know, as opposed to special education needs. That's why I think this 140,000 I don't have a problem with, that is directly tied to a student.
Well, I just want to make a quick comment from what Paul, you said earlier. I think our special, special education is really robust compared to private school. I, I saw one of the exit interviews said that someone left to go to private school, and then they came back because their student got diagnosed with a learning disability. And so I'm pretty confident in our special education system here, but that's just my personal opinion.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying we, you know, there, there is not needs being met. I'm saying that I hear stories over and over again where, where families are looking for resources and we just don't have them. So if we have money, a million five, then put a million five and get 100 additional resource from teachers.
And then there are some families that actually come to Bloomfield because we do have intensive support. But trustee, Paul, do you have any comment?
I mean, I do know, the good news is that they just passed that, you know, beyond raising 6%, that special ed would be 100% funded and also at risk. So that's a good thing going forward. Hopefully, special ed will be funded fully and better. I guess I'm in the middle a little bit. I, I, I agree with Paul that something that's directly impacted the student, I can understand that. The rest of it, I don't know if that's the right place for it, I guess, you know, and we have to make a decision as to where it should go. For me, I think if we can tie it to a student in special ed, it makes sense. If not, I would feel better for going somewhere else, so.
Trustee Kumar?
I'm fine believing the way it is.
Trustee?
Yeah, this, this is obviously a highly complex and layered situation and requires an area of expertise in budgeting and what's allowed to go where and what's been best practice. I agree with trustee Cullen that, in theory, that sounds, that is, I think, an ideal that I, I would hope that most people in this room would agree with that, that we can put every single dollar that we possibly can towards that program and those students. That would be the preference, but it's, it does, it seems like it's, it's more complex than that and layered. And I don't, I don't have a strong opinion on it currently in this moment, but it's, it sounds like there's a, a history of past practices that, that we're just starting to peel back, just beginning layers of this onion. There's a lot of layers to how it's done. So are we looking to remove it from here?
Just your opinion or because we've got no vote?
Okay, okay.
Which, which direction are you more in support of, leaving it as it is or...
To me, because the board previously voted on it, my vote is to leave it as is. And in the future, maybe try and dig in and understand these complexities a little further. But with where we are right now, with already having voted on it, I don't see any reason to change it.
Trustee, give her it. I think we'll get the anticipation.
I agree with Paul. The optics of it are bad. I, I just don't see how we transfer...
Well, we haven't transferred anything yet.
Well, I don't see the, the transfer by, I mean, the funds on this basis, okay? But then, when I look at it from a different lens, we can transfer the funds for any reason. And so what troubles me is that we were having conversations about the budget and not having in the general fund, having the reserves that the, like, many, many boards ago had agreed upon, 15, 20%. And when we decided to figure out how we were going to fix that, we transferred some money from the center fund. And I, I don't necessarily agree with that as a measure to fix the budget, right? So I'm, I'm in the middle, I, I guess, because I think you can, I mean, you're allowed to transfer funds. I'm not hearing that the center fund students are underfunded, you know, that they're not getting the services that they need. Hearing that the students who are in special education outside of the center fund are not getting the funding. So on one side, I look at it, I just don't like the way it looks where we're, where it says we're paying for legal fees from seven years. I would almost prefer that it, that it didn't, like, that that's not what we did and we came up with some other, you know, other reason to transfer it. I'm not sure, and I, I just, I still don't understand why Tina thought that that was like the line item that we should pay for. Since it's all, all those legal fees have already been paid for out of the general fund in years past. And so the fund tran, the trade-through of the funds just seems, I don't know, I'm not opposed to it because if we could do it for any reason, I just don't like the reason that was chosen, I guess.
Okay. Trustee Cullen, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, I mean, again, just because things were done in the past, and, and if, if someone said to me, we had a million five, we were going to pay for new Chrome Brooks, I would say absolutely not. I mean, I, you know, I mean, a million nine going to the new, new high school for the center fund? I mean, it, it was done. I mean, what's done in the past doesn't necessarily mean we need to make the same mistakes. We're underfunded in special ed and the general fund. I want any money that's transferred from the center fund reserves that's allowed to pay for special education tied to students. Anything else, I, I don't think is appropriate, and as John said, the optics look bad. So if it can be tied to a student, we should transfer it. If not, then we shouldn't.
And I guess that that's specifically where the confusion lies, is, are there other instances, something similar to this has occurred? We're just not aware of it, so that's the part that, in this instance, is, is this happening across the board in other ways that we just don't realize?
I mean, Karen outlined, like, all the times that it's happened, going back to 2016.
2016.
A couple of times it was done, it looks like just 60 grand. I probably did keep it...
Well, I can give you the background on that 60 grand. Oakland schools changed the reserve percentage from 5% to 7%. So that was to recapture that 2% back to the general fund. And that's just been consistently that 2%. If I were to do it on today's dollars, it's actually closer to 96,000. That it should be if I were to look at the actual tuition that's out and say, okay, divide this grand total by 107, and so bring it down to the 105, what's that differential? But that's what it was, is they changed that model in 2015 or 2016, whatever year that was, and said that contingency has increased from 5% to 7%. And that's when we said...
It looks like it happened twice, but...
There's 60,000 each year since that year.
Oh, every, okay, I see that.
So I guess I would, I would say that most dollars that we spend, with the exception of salaries, is direct spending for our students. And so I get that, you know, there is a, this is just my opinion, that the usage of the funds, I agree with you, Paul, you brought it up, I went back and I read, and I was like, oh, this is kind of interesting. I would just ask that in, like, for future conversations, that we could be brought to Paul's point to the board when we are, when there's things that are somewhat questionable as far as transfers would go, so we don't have to have this conversation. But I would also think that, given the history and, and it's not being something that's not necessarily an indirect cost to students, that I would support it being as it was presented.
So is it, is it, and I just want to make a point for a few. So is it clear that we have this reserve? So if, if students of special needs throughout the district, you know, needs cer, you know, need services, we can, we can transfer money to pay for those services from this fund directly to those students as opposed to go into mediation and poten, and potentially on this, you know, circumstances say we don't have the resources to give it to those students?
Right. And so my point was going to be that, that legal fees don't necessarily mean that we're paying lawyers to fight against the students. It, it means that we're trying to mediate out a solution and because they have a lawyer, we need, it's, it's, so in a lot of ways, these funds are going to, not in a very indirect way, I guess, but are going to help students with special needs because that's the process that's in place in order to mediate these things.
I, I wouldn't argue that based on what I've heard and, you know, I wouldn't argue that. I would not argue that.
Listen, think back to some conversations we've had, that I've had with you regarding some situations.
Even recent situations.
That occurred this year.
Right. So there's a lot of things that happen. Things need to be ironed out to figure out what is the best place for a number of our students who struggle in a number of different ways. And sometimes, and when you say legal fees, like, it's not necessarily a lawyer, it's, and it's not necessarily a court case. It could be a number of different things. And so, but then I lean back on the fact that it's seven years worth of things, so that, like, if we were to pay legal fees out of this fund, why, why are we just doing it consistently now?
I think that that is probably Tina's...
That was the recommendation.
...was to go back, recoup that spending, but then have that as a recurring moving forward.
And, and the email that I received from her, that were, that was the direction to me, it's written on the board. If that's not the flavor of the board and it's something that is causing you to pause, that's okay.
It, it is seven, like, why isn't 2015, we spent 60 grand, let's transfer 60 grand from the center, you know, it's, it just, it doesn't seem right, seven, it seems like creative accounting to, you know, seven years of legal fees that we already paid, now we're going to say, all right, well, we got to come up with some balancing act that, here, can we use the center fund and just go, and why stop at seven? Why don't you go back to like, you know, 1995 legal fees? You can get a million dollars.
Maybe the question is, do we do what most center programs do, is keep it at 7% and then move everything every year to the general fund? Period.
That would solve a lot of problems, I think. That would solve a lot of problems, I think. Do, do you think anyone else agrees?
That actually takes away from the special education program.
That's what you're asking.
It doesn't take away, we're already from the general fund, paying three to four million dollars out of the general fund that we're not funded.
Can that be earmarked for special education students?
Somehow.
Well, we're covering the cost of the general fund.
We're already paying it from the general fund, is what they're saying. So we're already paying out three million dollars from the general fund.
Three or four per year. What is the benefit of leaving it in the center fund?
There really is not.
So others, other districts transfer a wide home.
Because we've always been very conservative, since I've been here. I can give you my history since 2005. I started when I was four. It was to be conservative, our general fund always had a very robust fund balance. And it was to keep those and to be transparent and to keep it separate. When I first started with the district, the IA was actually included with the general fund. I fought with the state of Michigan to roll that back out because there were so, so there was such a high reserve for the IA, it was misstating the fund balance of our general fund. And at the same token, when we went to do our reporting with the state of Michigan when I first started, they wouldn't allow us to report center programs. It was separately in our audit, but the numbers that rolled up to the state, they said, oh no, that's restricted, it can only be utilized by an intermediate school district. Well, in Oakland County, local educational authorities such as Bloomfield run the programs, not the ISD. I fought for that as well for the district. I'm not opposed to saying, okay, we could do the seven percent and transfer everything. Whenever anybody in special education, if Rebecca or Trevor with the center programs have a need right now, Rebecca's looking to buy changing tables. It's being charged there, it wasn't built into the budget, that contributes to the loss. It's not that they're going without. And I guess I just want to be really clear on that. They are not going without. They're not being told, no, you can't do that. When they have a need, it's being addressed. When they wanted the canopies over the playground area, it's being addressed.
I can confirm that I was there last Friday and had a conversation with staff and asked that question again. It's, I don't want to hold them to anything publicly, but I addressed specifically that question, do you feel your needs are being met here? And the answer was a resounding yes. I mean, that's one specific, the Wing Lake facility, that's not the entire special education program, but that, that facility in and of itself. Again, I think we're getting to some, this isn't much.
I just don't, I, my whole intent of even, you know, besides the request of the board asking for more clarity and putting this together, my intent was, A, we never posted the transfer, I never did it. When information came up and I understood that there were concerns, I certainly did not post that transfer. I do not want to come to this Board of Education in two weeks with the projection for the final budget and have controversy or additional communication that doesn't need to happen surrounding that. If the board isn't or wants to pause, that's fine, I just want that final budget, I want there to be unity.
Trust me, again, another thing that we do a little bit differently in Bloomfield Hills compared to a lot of other places is sale of property. We keep it a separate fund. It is fairly common in other districts, sale of property goes into your general fund balance as well. We do not do that.
So are we, so from what I'm hearing, and I, I know trustee Cohen, it's not to your pleasure, but what I'm hearing is that we're going to leave it as is for the budget update for June.
Yes.
Okay, moving on, and we will have a deeper conversation moving forward, Austin House Center Funds, are used, does that sound?
I would like to see, maybe just a quick, at a future date, we could put on a quick, two-page slide presentation evaluating the pros and cons of the way we do it versus the scenario presented with the way the majority of other districts do it, and just have that visual of why we do it that way and what would be the pros and cons and would it make, would it avoid this confusion in the future?
Yeah, and, and my, and my, my only caveat going forward is when there are needs outside, you know, and, and I'm not saying all mediation is, is against the student, but when there are needs and need to be met from special education across the district, I guess we do have, you know, this seven percent, whatever that number is per year, one point five million dollars or whatever, whatever the amount is per year that we can tap into to utilize it to meet the needs of our students across the district. That's what I'm hearing.
It grows every year.
That grows every year. So it can't be a resource issue sometimes.
That's the potential.
Depending on how it's budgeted.
That's the potential. Okay, so thank you all. I think that was a very fruitful discussion. We're going to move on to item three J, Conan roofing, roofing recommendation.
This won't be as riveting as what we just experienced, so I apologize.
You never know, Jacob, you never know.
Paul, if you go get a drink, we can get this quick.
He's already has a cycle.
Okay, so the first, the first thing that you're looking at is going to be a change order for Conan that we're going to bring to the board for approval of ninety-three thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighty-two cents. Basically, anything over a hundred grand needs board approval, given the current state right now, ninety-three grand's close enough to a hundred grand, so we want to have this approved. Now, the history behind this is kind of, kind of weird. Bid pack five, we had an alternate, and, and we decided not to go with that alternate, and that was metal panels up on top of the, the current gymnasium. When they did bid pack six, which was the secure front vestibule, and they went to tie it in, that's when they started finding out that they couldn't tear off the, the mansard roof above the gym because it was, had all the, all the electrical ductwork mechanicals running through it. So that was when French, and it's, it's all kind of laid out here pretty decent, French, instead of redesigning all the mechanical electrical, they said that we can, we can rework the secure vestibule with the addition of the metal panels to have it all tie in. So when you look at the new addition and you look at everything, it's seamless. So we went up there a couple of times and looked at everything, it made sense to do it. So what you're looking at is, this would come out of contingency, currently we have three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars remaining in contingency for Conan. This would be one of the, the, the last or the biggest changes that are going to come out of that contingency number, and it's going to get us to the home stretch. So that's what that first section is pertaining to.
The ninety?
The ninety-three thousand.
Thirty thousand dollars.
Ninety-three thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars, or, yeah, six hundred and eighty-two and eighty-two cents. That's that number there. Then underneath that is, that's bond dollars that need to get awarded and board approved for the upper portion of the gym, which will be the media center. That roof had about, it had a couple more years left out of it, but once we do all the metal panels and we tie it in, there's no point to tie that into an aged roof, which means five years from now, three years from now, two years from now, we have to put EPDM up there. It won't, they can't, they would have to tear out all the metal panels to make it tie in. And right now, we would have our current roof, who's already doing the job, just make it seamless and do it all at once, so we don't have any future problem with leaks or anything going forward. So the ask of the eighty-eight thousand is part of the original bond dollars, I think it was eighty-eight thousand sixteen that was scheduled for that area. So there's two pieces here. One is the board needs to approve bond dollars for the roofing, which was part of the original twenty-twenty program, and the other is the change.
So what's the base bid cost of the need to work on the, I don't know what page it says, I'll look at us. Uh, where it says clarification, space bid, the cost to, the cost of the love work to be fifty-nine for the metal roof, and then it's twenty-fourth?
Oh, so you get, you get the metal panels and then you get the stainless steel. So there's two, two things that total them.
I don't want to leave and piss off Jacob.
What'd you say?
I was going to leave and get another quote, but, you know.
I'm going to go get him a hydration.
And then I think you had said before, um, our roof can be upwards to over a million dollars for replacement, is that what?
You know, there's a lot of, I mean, there's a lot of factors that come in. I mean, this roof here is, it's over one million, and the one at IA is over one million. So that's when you're doing the, the entire roofing system, you know, if you, if you, so basically Conan right now, the gymnasium got kind of shrunk down a little bit to make it the media center, so it's a smaller section of roofing that's, that's going to be up there. And this will last us twenty, thirty years.
So Jake, what is the original line item in the bond for the update? So he was at eighty-eight, and it's getting awarded at eighty-eight?
It, it, I believe if you look at the original item, Paul will have it up handy on his book from, from February twenty-twenty, it should say eighty, it should say eighty thousand, eighty-eight thousand sixteen dollars.
I don't have the book. Jacob knows I've looked through the book.
That was the original line item.
I don't have the book.
And our bid, or the.
And we beat it by sixteen bucks.
Okay.
He said eighty-eight thousand.
Came under budget.
Okay, it came under budget, thank you.
Eighty-eight thousand.
That's all we care about.
That'd be a lot.
I see the other zeros.
Well, yeah, the different roof part, unfortunately, it's a tying it in and it's the panels, right? Because I remember this conversation on bid pack five, where it wasn't really, I mean, just to have a seamless wall of panels for a hundred and eleven thousand dollars just didn't seem like it was, I mean, that seemed more for the architect than it was for us. And so it was like, we're not doing this. But one, once they did the tie in and they realized, we almost have to, because, you know, all, all, all that tested for asbestos. We had, everything had to get abated. That was the first part, right? We tore it all down, it all was hot, and then when bid pack six came out and it went to do the tie-in, it was like, they kind of put the cart before the horse with that, with that alternate on bid pack five.
So this is a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars is the request?
It is, but remember, the eighty-eight would come out of bond dollars, and then the ninety-three would come out of contingency for the Conan, so technically it's all bond dollars, but.
Can you go back to the beginning and tell me about the electrical again, like, that was burning in the roof panels and explain that just one more time? Like, I think I got it.
So, so, so the way it's set up now, it's that angled mansard roof. And the way they did the ductwork around the gym and the electrical, everything's tied in through them, they ran it through, same with this building here, we actually have major.
So when you say they, you mean?
The original people that built the building, yeah.
Okay, that's my question, okay. I want to know that.
Not the current folks.
We didn't just do that, and now we got to say.
Snap. Not the current destruction. Good point of clarification.
My question is, right, we're eighteen dollars off the original, so what's the ninety-three thousand, why contingency dollars?
Because it's a change order, because that was part of the, the alternate from bid pack five, and it, and because we didn't do it, that comes out of the contingency.
What, what's the change order from the original bond? My, my booklet that you say I've memorized, but what's the ninety?
The change order is the metal panels, that we didn't put the metal panels up, we said we're not going to do that. There's no need to do that.
But now we are.
Now we need to because we have to cover up that mansard roof, and we have to tie it in with the rest of the building. And to do that and make it all tie in with a secure vestibule and the addition, we have to keep that, and it was redesigned to make it line up.
So, so the original, original bond, the book, had eighty-six thousand dollars without the metal panels?
Eighty-eight.
Whatever, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, so we're saying.
It's hard to say without, right? Because a lot of times what they do is they say we can add, we can, the design, as they're designing it, they make it an alternate so we can, we can look at it and then say, yes, we want to do it, or no, we don't want to do it.
So, but in any case, the original plan that Barton came out with said it was going to be eighty-eight thousand, to do it right, is another ninety-three going into our.
But that's two different things. So the eighty-eight grand, so just picture, eighty-eight thousand dollars was just for on top of the gymnasium, and we're doing that for eighty-eight grand.
And ninety-three is?
Ninety-three is a, is a change order because of a field condition of the mechanicals running through the, the mansard roof and the way it tied into the secure vestibule.
For the other side of the roof, not the one, so it's cheating, two parts.
Which, which never got, which, which was never uncovered in the original plan that Barton came up with.
Correct, because they didn't, they didn't tie into.
So that was their mistake.
No, no, it was never designed.
Yeah, it was never designed.
They designed it and done it, plus design is important.
Well, I'm just saying, they, they.
Not a mistake.
No, they didn't design, we could not design things. So the bond, right, that blue book, the two hundred million, those details, needs to be remembered, that was from the tack and facility assessment. Those were needs then, those were monies put there. So the design occurs after you pass the bond. You, you were making numbers based on what we knew then, not what we know now, right? And so that's why you have contingency in the project, that's why you have to design this, but that's, this is a normal, normal process in any project.
All right, so, so you're saying it's, it was, when we use contingency, it was unfore, this extra spend is unforeseen when they came out with their original assessment of the two hundred million? It was unforeseen?
It was unforeseen, it was never designed.
It wasn't even known yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a question, why is the eighty-eight thousand listed on a change order request? Because this is a part of the original.
Well, I, I think you're looking at, well.
I'm looking at page one of the.
Yeah, and this is the way they, so the way they sent this over to us, and it, it, we haven't, nothing's been approved yet, so, and that is a, a, a change order request total is one eighty-one, and we can ask them to separate that, so it shows.
So, but I can, I can kind of speak to that. Because one fed into the other, I thought it would provide more transparency rather than saying, here's a new bid package, right, for the eighty-eight thousand, that was part of the budget, when in addition to that, right adjacent and connecting to it, is the need for this ninety-three thousand. So I thought it would provide more transparency to say, all in for this area on the Conan roof, it really is going to be a cost of the one hundred and eighty-one thousand, of which eighty-eight thousand was part of that bid pack, and then as they were prepping that wall and they came down and they found those mechanicals, it became apparent that we had to address that metal paneling. And that became a change order from the addition bid pack, is what I would say.
If, if we would have took, if we would have stuck with the course and we would have changed all the mechanicals, the cost would have been greater then.
I just want to clarify that this is going to come out of the regular budget and then the ninety-three thousand.
The eighty-eight thousand dollars would come out of bond dollars.
And when we, when we do the full memo from Plant Row and Cressa, it will have that clarity of eighty-eight thousand as originally planned, ninety-three thousand dollars from contingency associated with this building for a total approval of the one eighty-one.
But, but we're not, I mean, if, if you're coming to us for a vote, to Megan's point, we're only approving ninety thou, ninety-three thousand to come out of the contingency and the eighty-eight. So I don't want to be like, you approved the hundred and eighty thousand to come out, no, we didn't.
No, no, we're going to be clear and break it into the two. I've, I've already, yeah, we've had that conversation.
But we've had the conversation with the board, that the board approved eight hundred thousand, and, and, no, we're only approving now ninety-three thousand, unforeseen.
That's why I wanted, that's why I wanted more transparency on it, because it was so closely related. I didn't want there to be two, I didn't want there to be a change order for the ninety thousand dollars, which would have been less than the flow chart of the hundred thousand, up to a hundred thousand, between fifty to a hundred, I have the authority to approve. Over a hundred requires coming to the board. Because in coordination and consolidation with this eighty-eight thousand dollars, I wanted to provide more transparency to the board and our community, that the eighty-eight thousand dollars is new work, and then from the contingency, we need ninety-three thousand dollars. So all in for the Conan roof for this component, it's the one hundred and eighty-one thousand. Even though that ninety-three thousand would have never needed to be addressed or brought to the board, I wanted to provide more transparency.
Because they both say Conan roof.
Right.
And I appreciate that, because what I'm hearing is Barton Mallow estimated that our roof, that Conan was going to cost eighty-eight thousand dollars, and now it's going to cost more than double that.
No, no, not at all, no.
It's because when it was designed, so when the initial board package and all those details came out in February of twenty-twenty, we knew that we needed to do the gymnasium roof. That roof at that time, in that board book, has a budget associated with, with eighty-eight thousand. The bid actually came in at eighty-eight thousand. When the design was being completed to attach the addition and to come in, and that metal flashing was taken, taken down, that's when they found the mechanicals behind there. And then it's like, oh, we can't do this. They certainly couldn't have seen behind those metal panels to know that there were mechanicals running in there. And so then, that had to be addressed with a change order.
They don't have any of these lines?
The original, uh, yeah, our original alternate was a hundred and eleven thousand dollars that we decided not to go with for bid pack five. So we're looking at, we're actually looking at three different things there. If you look at the eighty-eight thousand dollars, which was part of the original bond scope, it was, we placed a section of roofing on top of the gym, which is now the media center, not the new gym, the media center, for eighty-eight thousand dollars. That needed to get board approved. We never presented that to the board because it was never to that stage yet. Then the metal panels, that had to get added on there, and the metal panels go on the side. Now technically, it goes on the side and it comes up. It has nothing to do with the eighty-eight thousand dollar roofing change, except they kind of tie into each other. So it makes the most sense now to do it in conjunction, because then it's the same warranty, we know we're not going to have leaks. We know we're not going to have leaks. I don't want a company two years later trying to rip off these metal panels and tie in their system.
Right.
So the eighty-eight grand is what was set in the bond with the, the top part. And then the ninety-three thousand is the alternate we said no to. And now we have to do a face-on. Bid Pack Six in the way the secure vestibule.
So the one eleven alternate that you said no to?
Because, because we said no, now when we do it, it's a change order.
Right.
Why was the cost higher than ninety-three grand? Why was it a hundred and eleven?
It sounds like that's what you estimated and the bid came in at ninety-three.
Yeah, I don't know what was the, yeah, we could look at that original and see if there was something else that.
And that may have to do with the not having to rip out, rip out the tie-in because you're doing it all at the same time.
So when the proposal came for the hundred and eleven, this, this mechanical issue was, was unknown, so it wasn't optional, it wasn't, this isn't necessary.
Well, when the issue, well, when they said a hundred and eleven, they wanted us to wrap, wrap all the metal panels on.
Yeah.
And just kind of make it their, uh, their, their, their business card. That's.
It'll look good.
It's, it's cohesive with the district, right? I mean, that's what you see at South, we see it North. It's those nice metal panels that, that go down. It just didn't seem to make sense for a hundred and eleven thousand dollars to add those panels if they're just for.
Show.
Show. So we decided not to go with that alternate. Now it turns out that we almost have to go with the alternate because underneath that is, once they started tearing into it, we go, oh, we have some big decisions to make.
Okay. And is that standard in a lot of our buildings, not to have updated, updated MEB droids?
Yes, because if you think about nineteen fifties, so you've had, and we've had, so I'll just give you, this is my history with it. So from way back when, trying to consolidate all these ass builds, floods, like all that stuff, so those things.
It's just not something that's been kept.
Yeah, you just can't, you know, you're talking about things from nineteen fifties and the sixties.
Yeah, and getting the droids would cost more, okay.
I thought I was in fire. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say fire.
That was good.
I'm smoldering.
Smoldering, smoldering.
Okay.
Okay.
But, but just to drag it out a little bit more. At the end of the day, Paul, at the end of the day, the ninety-three grand will come out of contingency, not the eighty-eight, so they'll leave us two ninety-two with some change, two hundred and ninety-two thousand in the contingency. So you're not, you know, when you say we're approving the ninety-three, that's your change order. And then the other motion will be to approve eighty-eight thousand dollars of the original bond dollars to go towards the, the roofing that was based on the original.
Yep, I understand. Thank you, Jacob.
You said it was going to be a great conversation and it was. All right, so we're going to move on to item three K, which is the review of the twenty, May twenty-fifth Rigor Media Agenda Framework. So we can take a look at the materials that Rebecca provided us. Two, a special recognition. Three, public comments. Let's get down to consent agenda, item number seven. Any questions on those items?
Well, after the discussion today, are we going to be adding an authorization of the superintendent administration to enter into negotiations regarding the purchase of land?
As before or in the, in the consent agenda?
I wasn't sure if it would be a consent agenda item or a board business item. Or did you authorize it today? I wasn't sure if it was a purchase or not.
This would be a vote. So I think it's a board business. Thanks Rebecca.
Board business?
So nothing in the consent agenda questions. Board business, uh, Bloomfield Hills Cooperative would be A, and then B, you'll, you'll just add it.
I'll add that to it and then I noticed they will have to do the appointment of, for the board.
MLA.
Intern program committee will be making a recommendation to the full board of education about the students.
On the twenty-fifth.
For the next year's program, so we'll add that to that as well.
Yep.
Of the board interns. I gotta write this out, it's going to be bad. And then, okay. Then support for the Oakland Schools proposal.
So I've got a question here. Um, is it Oakland County School Boards Association or Oakland Schools ISD?
Oakland Schools ISD.
Okay, got it.
And I'm sure you've, I mean, it's just. I move, so, so, and again, usually, and I don't know if we were or we have the, the details, maybe it was sent. I mean, are we going to have a discussion of that?
Karen can talk with.
So.
I mean, there's some things on there that I, I had questioned, but.
I'm not sure if I'd be able to land some here, but I can, you know, write a comment. This was presented at Oakland County Business Officials, which I attended. In totality, um, the budget for their general fund, they're anticipating property tax values to be going up by five percent. They won't be, because inflation has exceeded behind it, uh, they're not going to be subject to headly rollback for the first time in several years. They've listed out their primary, um, major features focusing in on socially emotional well-being and mental health support, school safety, a focus on cybersecurity, shared services, Oakland Schools as an ISD provides shared services of technology, intergovernmental agreements. I know here at Bloomfield, um, we did have an IGA for accounts payable support at one point. The MyPure Consortium, we participate with that, that's the finance and the HR software. They have literacy essentials, subsidies that they provide back to the districts where we can receive and participate with certain software, Zillow and other things at a reduced price where they pay for a portion of it. They are budgeting for their personnel costs on increase of two point five percent and a one percent increase for non-union staff. So they've listed out all the details in the cover letter. You know, that's just in totality.
So, so, so from a highlight in terms of their, you know, in terms of their costs going up, what are, what are the highlights? Or should we go into the document reading to have discussion at the twenty-fifth meeting? Like from your meeting, what are the highlights of the increased cost?
So they.
When you say staffing two point five percent.
I would have to go into their details to get those numbers. It's all broken up by fund. They allocate staff based on percentages by different funds. This highlight is just on their general fund, but they have other operational funds as well.
It's only a hundred and seventy pages. So.
No, I know it is and it's, and it's, and it's done that way specifically, right? So, and I want to get the, the highlight, right? Okay. I mean, there's a reason why it's a hundred and seventy, right? And I want to get the highlights of what I'm voting, right? We're going to vote, if we're going to vote, it's on there to vote yes, right? So.
No, it says, it says vote.
Oh, okay.
It is vote.
Rebecca, you can do it.
We have to vote on it.
Okay.
It's a four.
Adopt the resolution or to dis, okay, I see, okay, got it, okay.
So you do get to say no.
Or, or the question is not about, let's say yes or no. Who do I address my questions to and who will get me answers?
So Seva was elected as the liaison for the board. So send your questions to Seva and I will try to help support him with the answers.
All right, so I ask him and he's, he's designated to read the hundred, hundred and seventy pages.
I think you can do a control off in the PDF.
All right, some unofficial.
We'll send you some.
I'll summarize it for you. I'm telling you right now, just give it a go.
Right now, I'm kind of busy with budget and bond.
So, yeah.
No, I mean, I mean, sir, I mean, kidding, I mean, sir, it's right, I mean, we're voting on something, we should like, I mean.
Take two weeks.
We can also arrange a phone call with Oakland Schools as we've done before.
Yeah, correct, right.
Sorry, what was that?
Said we can also arrange a call with the Director of Financial Services.
That'd be good.
The Oakland Schools and continue questions and ask Michelle Saunders directly.
Yeah, if you can send your questions over to me.
Thank you for that suggestion Rebecca, sure.
I'll have Rebecca to coordinate meeting and Karen and I, we can ask this.
Correct, yep, okay.
Did everybody get that? Send questions to Seva.
Do you want me to reissue the presentation?
Yes, please.
And then you can submit questions via Google Doc?
I mean, I'm sure there is, right, in that document, there's a table of content. I'm not reading a hundred, I mean, I'm sure.
No, but there's a.
It's pretty robust.
There's a lot. It's a, it's a large, it's a seat of four documents.
Okay, all right, got it.
So you're summer reading.
No, no, it's two weeks reading, not summer reading. I have to read it in a week.
That's why you're drinking caffeine.
That's why I'll be up all night reading the hundred and seventy pages.
So I, I, item number C, um, Jake, what's the, what's this?
Site work.
The site work.
Oh, this would be a Paul Willst thing. So this is, um, Plant Mountain Cresso will go through all the building site work that, for the, the, the Bid Pack six point two. This is for Eastover, the new Eastover and the new Lone Pine, which would be the current East Hills and the current West Hill sites. And this is going to be all new storm work. It's ADA, ADA access and it's also the playground site work under, underneath everything. So it ties it all in between the ADA access, the storm drains and then the site work for the playgrounds.
Okay. And then you can, you can just continue.
And then on that is going to be, um, the award recommendations for childhood renovations at the new Eastover building. And that's, we'll, we'll get more information this week and we'll have a recommendation of the, the numbers all finalized. But everything's looking pretty good on that. We're pretty happy where the numbers are coming in that.
Is that at the new Eastover building?
Isn't that nice? Isn't that just, what are we talking about? Current Eastover.
All right, because we covered new Eastover.
It should say the new, um, early childhood.
Still need to be named.
So that should say.
Notes get worse.
I just like to call.
Early childhood or child. Oh, he childhood center.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Dr. Dr. Southworth. Or President, whatever, it's a long night and I only have three, but, um, no, the, the question, question is for each meeting going forward, this is for you and Seva, I guess, should we give the community an update as to where we are on the superintendent's search?
Oh, it's on the agenda.
Oh, is it? Oh, it's earlier? Oh, it's not board business, it's up somewhere that we just.
Way ahead of you, Paul.
It's all the way up top.
Is it where?
We just, we just kind of.
Where, where, pledge of allegiance? Where is it? Special recognition?
Board Presidents update.
Item six.
Item six, okay.
Okay, it's fair, okay.
I have an idea. Should we have a public counter?
Is there that one?
Wait, is it there?
Three A, uh, yes, it's, 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 you know, we, we, I don't know why we went straight to the content.
It's all of this. Oh, my goodness.
We went to, we went to. We went to consent agenda.
I'm like, there is a. No, I thought I saw it.
Okay, what's next?
It's not even that late. Okay, placeholder for the Conan roof, so we're good with that.
Yeah, and then, and then F, F is going to be the same, but you will see where it says E is coming out of bond, F is contingency portion.
So F is like ninety-three thousand and E is the eighty-eight, correct?
Yep.
Okay. And then, um, G, what's G?
G is we, this is for North and South primarily. This will be the, um, classroom technology for staff. It's going to be about two hundred and eighteen thousand. We'll get that. I'll have all those details for you. Cooperative bid, but we just need to have you guys approve that. And then I'll have everything from like their monitors, connectivity, workstations, laptops, that's those types of connectivity that'll be, that was part of the bond and expectation.
Okay. And then saying David.
And then, I'm sorry?
Your H.
Oh, H, sorry. And then this one, I am just representing the IAs, PTIA. They have raised funds to redo their gymnasium AV system. And so, of course, we've worked with them to help design that and work with one of our vendors that is their county cooperative. And we were able to negotiate with our, this is good news, with our current, that current vendor to actually donate some funds to help the IA stay to a budget that they can afford to redo that gymnasium and they're going to have a really cool system. So it's just coming for approvals for you guys to.
What are we approving? Like if we're not spending, like, are they spending it?
It's like a, consider it a contribution to the district and it becomes our equipment and the value of it is greater than the state of Michigan bid threshold of the twenty-eight thousand and thirty-five thousand. So there's board policy as to what requires board approval for contributions as well as for spend. So this puts us in compliance with our policy.
So if, like, and I don't, I'm thinking of Eastover, so when Eastover raised money for playground equipment, never came to the board.
Money.
What? Well, I'm not saying it's thirty-five, I mean, what's the precedent here?
So the Michigan, state of Michigan bid threshold is twenty-eight thousand dollars that board has to approve. Anything that's more than twenty-eight thousand, I think it's like forty-five dollars, don't. Thank you.
So, so if any organization, any PTO organization raises money.
If they make a contribution, it comes on.
What about the Conan playground?
So if it, so Conan, it did go through and we actually, they donated the money and we purchased through a consortium bid. So then this particular purchase is not a consortium bid and the dollar amount is greater than the state of Michigan bid threshold. And then if they were to just give us a donation, that still would require board approval because as a district, whenever there's a donation, we always want to consider, would there be any cost for us to maintain or keep whatever's being donated? Does this create any inequity among our buildings? For example, if I was super passionate and I wanted to give a three hundred thousand dollar playground to Smith Elementary. And then Smith Elementary had a three hundred thousand dollar playground that three other elementaries in the district didn't have, it would create an inequity. So there are policies that are written in order to prevent that from happening. One of those are donations that come in that would require board approval. The other is the spending. So it's great that they want to give the donation or make the purchase on our behalf. The value of the gift is at such a level it would require board approval. Or if we purchase on their behalf and then they reimburse us through the PTIA Hills Fund, it's still a purchase that's over the bid threshold.
I mean, yeah, just as long as everyone knows that if there's a threshold amount that they're raising and buying something, I guess it has to come to the, first, this is the first I've ever, I've ever seen.
Done this in the past. I think we did it with the Lone Pine PTO when they were doing their playground there. I think Conan PTO at one point, there were a couple of different purchases.
Yeah, the Conan one is, I was, at raising those funds, I remember we had a.
Right, and I know that we worked with them on purchasing and finding consortium bids and made sure that we were in adherence with the board policies and.
All right, if that's it, that's it. Just don't recall.
So moving on to, um, agenda item.
One second.
Sure you have.
When is the seeking plan?
That's, uh, on the next committee of the whole.
Okay.
That we will review, the three of us will review with the board.
It should be.
Uh, then it'll go to the June board meeting at the end of June.
Okay.
Four G, um.
It's on the next agenda.
It's on the next agenda.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we didn't.
Thank you. All right, so L, so agenda for June eighth. Public comic. Study session. Item superintendent update, diversity assembly investigation update, yes.
Sure, I just throw it on there?
Yes.
Yeah, we should have one.
Well, we have like, do we anticipate it's like the final portal or just not?
I think we have to have a discussion.
Yeah.
Sorry, wait one second.
Diversity assembly investigation.
I, uh, because it's.
We're having a meeting with the attorney next Thursday and it's the first meeting that we're having since our initial meeting.
Placehold that we have.
Okay.
Who knows what we're going to do.
Yeah, so, yeah. Yeah, if we had more information shared, we would, but we're going to learn more next Thursday when we have that meeting.
Awesome. And then C is, um, foundation collaboration.
I'm sorry, I, for the last, the last one, and I'm, you know, I don't want to go back, but I thought at each meeting, we were going to give the healing update. Is that, is that now just coming off the agendas?
It's been part of his superintendent's report.
You want it to be an agenda?
I thought we were going to make an agenda item. You know, I mean, we do have like a three-month plan and I think the committee would like to see who has been training, right? If there is items on there that need to be done, I'm sure the committee would appreciate an update on all the items. Not part of a superintendent update.
So are you suggesting it be under board business?
Uh, no, we can go up.
Or committee of a whole?
No, no, in, like, each, each meeting, it's live, you know, live cast, we give an update as to the things that we've accomplished since the last meeting. So if, if we need to put it on the board business or if there's another place to put it, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be business because we're not voting on anything, but.
Well, if you're.
Superintendent's giving, can you do it like you do for mine, maybe, how you do like update?
Previous agenda or you're talking about every agenda?
Every agenda.
Every, every agenda, right.
Because we didn't talk about.
He gave an update last.
Regular, regular board meeting.
Yeah.
Regular board meeting update.
Do you know how you have the update?
This is, this is committee of the whole, this one.
Yeah, I'm talking about the previous one, I missed it.
So going back to the May twenty-fifth meeting, you want as a separate agenda item.
I have update on.
Superintendent's report.
Like you have this.
Yeah, maybe under, underneath superintendent report, update on what we've accomplished since. Like, you know, how many people have trained, how many have gone here, right? We have a whole strategy.
If, if it's already part of the, you know, superintendent's report.
We're just going to add it as a line item, it's still under the superintendent's report, it's not, and it's just.
Okay.
For, for reassurance, we'll just keep it moving. Alright, so, um, liaison committee reports, so looking forward to hearing about all those, naming of, um, oh wait, I thought we were.
We, we didn't do it today.
No, wait, do we need to, do we need to add that?
Well, it was on there today, but I think you just.
Oh, did I skip over?
I didn't say anything.
We went over because of.
We went over the board intern.
And then we only went back to Paul's.
Oh my goodness, thank you.
And mine.
So.
So we're going back to, thank you, I'm like, did we not do that today?
I sent you a text.
You did, but I haven't, I'm trying to do like Paul told me, I can't.
What did I say?
I'm going to go on camera. F Y E budget, all that, yeah, we're good with that. Sinking fund, you're good with the update for sinking fund?
Yep.
And then, okay, so let's go back, we're good with the agenda for study session? I went through it fast. John's looking at me like, you're good?
Item E.
You're good, you're good. Alright, go back.
I, I added this, this is really just a placeholder for E, because I wasn't sure where this conversation would take us today. But it sounds like the next step after the survey is that Karen was going to share the feedback and just a board update. And so it wasn't coming back to this table, that, until it was ready for the board vote on the twenty-second, that's what I thought I heard.
So we're going back to F, so you all know the naming of Eastover and Lone Pine sites, correct?
I mean, unless you, my initial like timeline was that it would be in the June second or something board update. And it would be on the next, like, June eighth, whatever, eight, committee of the whole, only, only if you want to have conversation about it. So that then at the regular meeting, you can be able to make a vote if there's any action.
A co-pilot.
No, I missed that, I'm sorry, I did, I missed that too.
Oh goodness, I was doing better at doing my checkmarks.
That's that June, that's the June.
Are we, are we good with discussing the, okay, let me, let me make sure we did not miss anything else. Did we not miss anything?
We're getting, uh, more efficient.
Okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to say, um, happy teacher appreciation week, right?
Yeah.
So acknowledge our teachers, um, as we're super excited for all that used to, does anybody else want to say anything before we adjourn? Alright, all hearts satisfied, we adjourn.